One out there here.
So are the times, I'm signing in? Or some reading?
Both just one about that.
Okay. Oh shoot, he wanted, uh, I couldn't do this.
That's it all, that's the.
Okay.
Can you print that screen? Can you print that screen? Can you print screen? You can't sign in?
Good afternoon, I'm Doug Shipman, Atlanta City Council President, calling to order this meeting regularly scheduled May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Like to welcome everybody back to council chambers after some repairs that were made. You'll notice the new lighting and new screens. We're glad to be back in our regular chambers. Madam Clerk, would you please call the opening roll?
Good afternoon, Council President, members of council. We have Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post Three at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District One.
Here.
Councilmember. Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Dozer, District Four.
Present.
Councilmember Liliana Bakary, District Five.
Here.
Councilmember Alex Wan, District Six. Councilmember Howard Shook, District Seven. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District Eight. Councilmember Dustin Hills, District Nine. Councilmember Andrea Boone, District Ten. Councilmember Marcy Coller Overstreet, District Eleven. Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District Twelve. Mr. President, we do have a quorum of members present.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. It was sent out ahead of time. If there are no changes or updates to the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Bakary. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the counter unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the agenda.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
Twelve yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt the agenda carries. Next, I am very pleased to welcome back with us for today's invocation, Chaplain Roosevelt Johns from the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department. Very glad to see you and offer the microphone to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Would you please bow your heads for a moment of prayer? Eternal God, our Father, we come today once again to give your name honor and praise. We exalt you in the presence of this assembly and we thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed on each of us here. We welcome you here today and we pray that you will guide all that takes place in this hall, Lord God. You are a God of order and we pray that everything that is done is done in the spirit of excellence and in order. Father, we pray that you would bless the city of Atlanta at this time and the work that shall take place here today. Bless everyone under the sound of my voice as they reason together, making decisions, developing plans, delivering judgments as it relates to the operations of the city of Atlanta. Help them to always be mindful of the people to whom they serve. Bless each one with wisdom and clarity as they work on the good or work for the good of the people. May all that they do please you and bless the people. In the matchless name of Christ Jesus, we pray. Amen.
As we remain in a moment of reflection for a moment, I'd like to ask my colleagues if there are any remembrances. Councilman Bakary.
Yes, um, thank you. I thought it would be appropriate at this time for us to keep in our prayers Adriana Smith, a woman who is being used, uh, who is brain dead and being used as a human incubator. This is a very scary time. It is something that I believe I should use my platform to draw attention to and something that we should all be wary of because this should not and cannot happen. So if we could all please be cognizant and keep her in our prayers, um, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will move to proclamations, commendations, and other special awards. First, I'd like to invite Councilmember Michael Julian Bond and all of those here who are for, uh, joining us for the recognition and celebration of actor, director, and humanitarian Bill Duke to please join us up on the podium.
You already dressed.
Yeah, they told me go ahead and get dressed. He come married too, so.
Oh, no, this for Bill Duke.
I know, I know. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I met him when I was working with Louis Gossett Jr.
Mr. Man.
Right here. So, how you doing there, young man?
Come on up, Mr. Duke. Do you want to lean on this chair here?
Okay, sit down there.
If you need to. Hey, how you doing?
I'm good, man.
Good to see you.
Doing all right?
Yes, good to see you too.
No, I had to come.
Oh, oh, good.
Man, appreciate it.
I want to say good afternoon to everyone as our guests gather up and we have room on either side of the podium. So you can come, come on up. Yeah, you don't have to, have to be shy. Come on up. We got plenty of, plenty of room on, on my left. So come on around. Now, we operate like a church in a jail. There's always room for one more, right? But I want to say good afternoon to everyone. It is a pleasure, uh, to be here today to honor someone who has not just entertained us extremely well over their career, but has been a teacher and a inspiration, uh, to those in and out of the film industry. I know you want to tape it. Come on around. And so we're here today to honor producer, director, and actor, Bill Duke. Where, where is he?
He right here.
No, he is. No, I know. He was, but we want you to stand where everybody can see. Okay. And so we, we're here to honor you today. Mr. Duke, here's a chair right here for you. If you want to sit a little bit. And so I will read the proclamation in pertinent part and I know that, uh, Councilmember Amos and maybe, and of course, the Oval Limes want to give a word. You may have someone else that may want to give a word to you. And I will read the proclamation in pertinent part in recognition and celebration of actor, director, and humanitarian Bill Duke. Whereas the Atlanta City Council proudly recognizes acclaimed actor, director, and humanitarian Bill Duke, whose influential career in the arts spans more than five decades, leaving an indelible mark on film, television, and global media. And whereas Mr. Duke's exceptional talents have brought to life unforgettable roles in films such as Predator, American Gigolo, Deep Cover, uh, and Get Rich or Die Trying. While the, while his dec- directorial achievements include landmarks, uh, like A Rage in Harlem, The Killing Floor, and serving as the co-writer and fine, in the final episode of the hit TV sitcom, Good Times. And whereas, why didn't they ever get out the ghetto bit? I'm just teasing. And whereas his powerful voice, uh, behind the camera has extended to television, documentaries, filmmaking, directing, and impactful NAACP Image Awards, uh, nominated for works such as Dark Girls and Light Girls and contributing memorable performances in the series like Black Lightning, which I love, Dallas Fame, and Tyler Perry's The Oval. And whereas, uh, Mr. Duke has demonstrated a deep commitment to education, to mentorship, having served on the Board of Trustees of the American Film Institute, been appointed to national and state commissions, and has published the Duke Media Foundation to teach filmmaking, media literacy, financial management to youth. And whereas, in recognition of his groundbreaking contributions to lifelong dedication to the arts and public service, Mr. Duke has been honored with a lifetime achievement, uh, tribute by the Directors Guild of America, a star on the Hollywood's Walk of Fame, and in not, in twenty twenty-five prestigious awards from the Atlanta Film Festival and American Film Institute, serving on its Board of Trustees. He was appointed to, by President Bill Clinton, to the National Endowment of the Humanities and was selected to the California, uh, State, uh, Film Commission, uh, by Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger. And whereas Bill Duke, a proud alumnus of the Butcheress Community College, Boston University, and NYU's Tisch School of the Arts, has consistently exemplified power and education using his academic foundation to uplift others as a champion of diversity, inclusion, and excellence in media and storytelling. Now therefore, we, the members of Atlanta City Council, as the city of Atlanta, hereby proclaim this day as Bill Duke Day in our fair city. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and it calls the seal of the city of Atlanta to be here and to affix. Congratulations, Mister Bill Duke. Take a quick photo. All right. Thank you. No, you what? But wait, as they say on late night television, but wait, there's more. So we have, uh, Councilmember Byron Amos would like to say a word. And if there are any other colleagues from the council, if you'd make your way forward, if you'd like to speak. Oh, well, well, let's do the video.
Video first.
Well, first, before we bring, uh, Byron up, we have a video prepared, uh, about Mr. Duke. So we turn towards the monitors, please.
Whether he's in front of the camera or seated in the director's chair, Bill Duke's presence commands the room. With over five decades in the industry and several blockbuster films in his rearview, Duke has blazed a trail that many actors could only hope to follow. He moved to Atlanta last year. We wanted to know more about this gifted talent from Poughkeepsie, New York, so we stopped by for a visit.
I had two of the greatest parents I could ever describe. My mother and father were great people and they never allowed my sister or I to use any kind of excuse not to be successful.
That included being mocked for his skin tone as a child and a painful racial slur from a white classmate that drove him home.
I went home, I got in the bathtub and, um, there was bleach in the bathroom. I tried to rub the back off of my skin. My mother, so I was going to drink some too. My mother came into the bathroom just in time and stopped me.
For Duke, adversity served as a catalyst. His career path came into view years later at Duchess Community College.
There was a great teacher there, Constance Keen, and she taught these Peach and Drama classes. And, um, every year you had to do a play. And so I don't know what she saw in me, but we did a play called The Emperor Jones by Eugene O'Neill. And I played the part of the lead character. And something, it's hard to explain, something clicked in me.
But his parents were pragmatists and suggested he become an English professor or a doctor.
And one day they just told my parents, I can't do that no more, can't do no more.
He saw a film that would intensify the initial spark he felt during his previous college play experience.
Was Mr. Colbert ever in this greenhouse, say, last night about midnight?
He just stepped in across the face. I said, what? What? I want to be like him.
You go find the kid that was in the schoolyard?
That's right. If I could find him.
Oh, man, life would be sweet.
I guess they just slapped the snout out of his nose.
It wasn't always easy. Times were pretty tough between auditions. There was intermittent homelessness, odd jobs at the A and P, even washing dishes at the Howard Johnson's to make end meat.
I had an apartment in New York City and I ran out of money to pay the rent. So I'm standing in front of the apartment building and I'm begging people, can I have some money? I feel a tap on my back. I turn around, it's this older black lady. I'll never forget this. She looks in my face. She says, "Baby, do your mama know y'all here doing this?" I never begged for a penny after that.
The rest, as they say, is history. From his first film, Car Wash, to Commando, Predator, Minister Society, to his directorial success in The Killing Floor and directing Whoopi Goldberg in Sister Act Two. Multiple television appearances would continue. But Bill Duke has not slowed down. He's involved in humanitarian work in the fight against HIV and AIDS. The Duke Media Foundation provides filmmaking and media literacy. And he has a huge project in the works, one that will tell the story of a legendary artist we all know. He says he's grateful for this honor from the Atlanta City Council.
I really, really appreciate their recognition. And, um, I'm humbled by it. I enjoy what I do. I don't want to stop until I drop.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm Atlanta City Councilmember Byron Amos and I don't know Mr. Duke. Probably about four years ago, you pulled up to the Fayetteville home of Louis Gossett Jr. And I was serving as his special assistant at that time. And I let you in and, and the three of us sat there and to sit at the feet of two great men, such as yourself and, and Mr. Gossett, to hear the stories, to hear the laughter, to hear the heartaches, but more importantly, to hear the good times that, that the two of you share, definitely touched me and changed my life. And I'm going to say to you what I said to you then. You know, people talk about all of your movies, but my generation, Menace Two Society, in the clip that they was just showing, and you playing the detective and you looked Kane directly in his eye and say, you know, you just effed up, right? Know you just effed up. I have taken that with me every day of my life. And every time I talk to a reporter, I keep in my mind, it's their job to ask the questions, but it's my job to answer them. So sir, thank you for being who you are and for all of the fun times, the times we have laughed, the time we have celebrated you. And it is an honor to serve on this body to say thank you again for being who you are. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other council members like to speak? No, we'd like to bring up someone who is no stranger to the Atlanta community and, and the film world, film world, Mr. O'Fimo O'Malami.
Thank you, Councilman. When I heard about this honor, I told him I need to come and just pay my tribute to one of my heroes who has blessed my life. And my wife and I have dedicated ourselves to this city over three decades or more. And when you said you were coming here, I knew that was that extra shot of energy to propel our city even further into a future that's bright and that has opportunities for many young people who simply wouldn't have that. I'm honored. And you and I share something very personal. Michael Schultz gave me my first film job and my first starring role on Broadway. And I know what he did for you in Car Wash. And that brother has done that for you, me, and many others, and now you're doing that. I'm here for you. Hosea Health, current on the legacy of Hosea Williams and my wife Elizabeth. I just want you to know, if you need to call us for whatever it is you're doing, count me in. You understand? Count me in, sir. God bless you. Thank you.
Mayor Dickens, would you like to say a word? Whatever, as the mayor makes his way, I have a question. What I've always wondered, uh, when in Car Wash, y'all, y'all listen to this, it's important. In Car Wash, why did you come back to rob the car wash? Everybody knew that was you. Just kidding. Mayor Dickens, please.
First, let me meet you. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Andre Dickens, Mayor of Atlanta. Thank you, uh, Michael Julian Bond and Byron Amos for, uh, really paying tribute to one of our, uh, entertainment greats. I do, uh, love that line, as you do Byron Amos. For our generation, we watched that movie, uh, Menace Two Society and saw that line. And I mean, every day I have to, you know, that, that, that's a, that's a pure line right there, man. But you've been in so many other movies and, uh, I've enjoyed watching your career. And I'm, you know, grateful that you have chosen Atlanta, Georgia to be where you are for such a time as this. And so, um, all of your work has really been instrumental in guiding other people's careers to want to join and be actors and then directors. And, um, and that's meaningful for to see African Americans on the front and behind, uh, the cameras. And so the things that you've done, uh, has been remarkable. And so, uh, enjoy this moment in Atlanta. Continue to move our film and entertainment industry forward. We're number one in TV and film for a reason. So, uh, let's continue to keep that train going. Thank you, Michael Julian Bond, for honoring this great American and now Atlantan. Welcome.
All right, well, without further ado, Mister Bill Duke.
Your recognition of my work is more than appreciated. Words cannot express and thank you. I want to thank the mayor of. So I, oh, I did? Okay. All right, am I okay now? Councilman Bond and, um, of course, the mayor and the city of Atlanta Council and everyone who made it out here today. I'd like to thank my hardest family who is here. My daughter, Heidi, Stevie, who helps me. There are so many people in my life that I owe this gratitude toward. But all of you for coming here and allowing me to be here today. It's, uh, very important to me. At eighty-two years old, you know, you don't count the years, you count the minutes. And every minute is very, very important. Do you all like jokes? It's a little risque, but can I tell it?
It's your day.
Thank you. A little black boy is helping his mother bake a cake. Okay. And he gets white flour all over his entire body. He goes to his father and say, Daddy, Daddy. Father says, Yes. Look, I'm a little white boy. Boom. Father hits him on his butt. Go tell your mother what you just said. Goes into his mother's room. Yeah, baby. Look, I'm a little white boy. Boom. Hits him on his butt. Go tell your grandmother what you just said. What did I? Go tell your grandmother. Goes to his grandmother's room. Grandma, Grandma, yeah, spit it out, baby. I'm a little white boy. Boom. Hits him on his butt. Goes back to his mother. His mother says, What did you just learn? You tell me the lesson you just learned. Little boy says, What I learned is I've only been white for five minutes and I hate you black people already. I'm so sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry. But this means a great deal to me. I want to thank everybody sincerely, everybody here, the officials, et cetera, I mentioned. And I will say one thing, my last word. Aspire to inspire before you expire.
We're gonna take a group shot, but I would be remiss if I did not mention that on Friday, Mr. Duke had a street named in his honor in his hometown. So just give him a big round of applause for that. So we're gonna move in front of the podium here.
If everybody can move up so you can get in the picture.
But we're too short to get in.
I know. Okay.
I'm definitely a magic.
Can I come to the front? Oh, well.
They wanted you.
I'm trying to, but this is What you're saying more important is that I don't know. I'm trying to. No, you don't have to stay in the color section, man. I was drawn to the back.
Right, right, right. Yes.
Four times over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, all over the place.
Great job. Great job. I was all P M A, that's all.
It's like if you saw a pothole on 75, 20. Yesterday was.
Exercise, bro.
Thank you all very much. Next, I would like to invite Councilmember Antonio Lewis forward and all of those who are here for the recognition of the Atlanta Department of Public Works during National Public Works Week 2025 to please join us on the podium. Your third. All those who are here for Department of Public Works National Public Works Week, please join us.
How are you? How are you? How are y'all? Come on in, don't be Yeah. How are you? How are you? Let's see, see. It's an extremely good week. Anytime you get to honor DPW, you know it's a good week. The essential workers and the frontline workers that we learned during the pandemic, we got as loud as possible during COVID-19 telling the world who our frontline workers were. So this is their week. This is our essential workers' week. So I'm extremely proud to be presenting this proclamation. My name is Antonio Lewis, Atlanta City Councilmember, District 12. And I have the, also Chair of the City Utilities Committee. I have the distinct honor of presenting the proclamation and recognizing the Atlanta Department of Public Works during National Public Works Week 2025. Extremely happy to be a part of this because, as most folks know, I spent six to 10 years of my life working for ASME, labor union, traveling 200 days a year, working with public sector workers across the country, making sure they fight for workers' rights in for weeks like this. And so without further ado, I'd like to present, read the proclamation and present it to our Commissioner, Commissioner Garmin and the amazing people, men and women of DPW. The proclamation reads as, the Atlanta City Council recognizes the Atlanta Public Department of Public Works during National Public Works Week 2025. Whereas, the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize the Atlanta Department of Public Works as a part of the National Public Works Week. And whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance, that are of a vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Atlanta. And whereas, these infrastructure, facility, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other essential structures and facilities. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Atlanta to gain knowledge of the main, knowledge and maintain of ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works program in their respective communities. And whereas, the City of Atlanta serves as a central municipality in the metro Atlanta area and a key entity for the Georgia American Public Works Association Metro Atlanta branch, which includes counties of Fulton, DeKalb, Clayton, Henry, Newton, Rockdale, Gwinnett, Forsyth, Cherokee, Cobb, Douglas, Cowee, Cowee, Fayette, and Carroll, and fosters collaboration and the sharing of best practices among member organizations to advance public work initiatives, advocate for public work first responders, and support the well-being of the greater metropolitan region. And whereas, the year 2025, March 65th, March, March the 65th National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas, the theme for National Public Works Week 2025, make sure we remember this part right here, right? People, Purpose, and Presence. People, Purpose, Presence speaks mightily to the essential nature of the public work services in support of our everyday quality of life. Now therefore, be proclaimed that week. The members of the Atlanta City Council on behalf of the Atlanta residents do hereby honor the men and women of the Atlanta Department of Public Works and proclaim the week, May 18th, 2000, May 18th through 24th, 2005, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, employees, and to recognize the contributions they make protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Signed by all 15 members plus our President of the Atlanta City Council. So first, I'm gonna ask if any of my colleagues would like to speak. Okay. Anyone from the administration? Because I see our mayor. I won't say his name. I'll just say anybody from the administration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Thank you for honoring our public works leaders and our public works workers across the City of Atlanta during this National Public Works Week 2025. I did a video for you guys for this event that you're having. And I want to really just thank you for all that you're doing across the City of Atlanta to make sure that our city is safe, clean, orderly, and that you do it with a smile. I see the men and women on the trucks each day. I see them out picking up trash, picking up litter, recycling, yard waste, doing a fantastic job. But you're also in the City of Atlanta. You are behind our fleet. You fix all our vehicles. This department is instrumental in making sure our fire trucks, police vehicles, our, of course, our public works vehicles, et cetera, are all taken care of and that they're on the road and maintained well and safe. So thank you all for what you do. Unsung heroes are behind me as well as throughout all of these offices that go out there and do this hard work. The various divisions of public works are very, very vital to our city's safety and our well-being and our way of life. And so we just really salute you and thank you. And thank you to the City Council for honoring this great department with a proclamation. Thank you.
Any of my colleagues once again. All right, so before we pass it to Commissioner Garmin, my six years with ASME, my last year I worked in the Communications Department. So I always tell people, I was in the room when they were thinking of the word frontline worker and essential worker. And it showed, the reason we came up with those words was to show the importance of our employees who had to work during the pandemic when everybody else was at home. So I truly, truly appreciate the men and women of DPW across the nation. And thank you, Commissioner Garmin, who's been an impeccable person of efficiency and effectiveness since she took over as Commissioner. I'll pass to our Commissioner, Commissioner Garmin.
Thank you. Thank you so much, of course honoring our mayor, Andre Dickens. Thank you so much for your kind words, Mayor. Councilman Lewis, thank you so much for your continued support of this department. Thank you to the City Council for their continued support of this department. Of course, this is a small representation of the mighty force of DPW that continues to do the good work of civil service on an everyday basis. Want to point out two of the deputy commissioners that are here. Deputy Commissioner Robertson, if you could raise your hand, and Deputy Commissioner Greenly. We could not do it without their continued leadership and support throughout this department. If you could please just give the good men and women of DPW another round of applause. It has certainly been a busy week for DPW with presentations in our quarterly and also our budget briefing. But there's just some things that I want to just share to support exactly what the mayor is talking about when he says, and he didn't use this language, but DPW continues to show up and show out in providing services to the men and women of the City of Atlanta. The mayor champions Atlanta as a city built for the future, focused on innovation and the use of technology to improve the lives of Atlanteans. Towards that end, DPW is people-focused, innovative-seeking, and a data-driven organization. To just share a bit of our performance, because I want you to know the service that we provide and how well we're doing. We're committed to continuous improvement, but I think you need to know how well the men and women of DPW are showing up and showing out. So our frontline heroes completed curbside collections, that's garbage recycling and yard trimmings for more than a million stops for this quarter, averaging a 99.5% garbage collection success rate. I think that deserves a round of applause for the good men and women of DPW. Our frontline heroes successfully completed over 5,000 requests for new carts. That's recycling carts and garbage carts via the cases for this past quarter. We completed over 9,000 book collection stops. That's when you put your items and debris out on the curbside and we come by and pick it up. Over 9,000 book collection stops, a 99% success rate for the quarter. And we serviced over 70,000 public receptacles stops for the quarter. Again, the men and women of DPW doing the good work of service delivery. And the mayor mentioned our fleet team. Our fleet labored for more than 29,000 unified collective hours to keep APD to keep APD vehicles rolling, Atlanta Fire and Rescue vehicles rolling, and Department of Watershed vehicles rolling. Please give them a round of applause. The mayor states regularly that Atlanta is a group project. We do this collectively. It is a combined effort, and we need your continued support to continue to provide that excellent service. Again, thank you, Councilman Lewis, for your continued support, and thank you to the City Council. And Mayor, thank you for your continued support of this department. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Mr. Bond usually says this, but we'll take the photo.
Next, I'd like to invite Councilwoman Michael Julian Bond back up to the microphone, and all of those who are here in honor of the 250th anniversary of Prince Hall Freemasonry to please join us up on the dais. Come on up. It's right there, Mayor.
Oh, good, thank you.
Brother Gay. You know, we need to lift our style up front. Right here? Right here?
Is it coming to him?
Yeah. Let's get a grab a chair for him. You gonna stand or you want a chair? You gonna stand? You stand right here? Yeah. No, we want you right here. How you feeling? Glad you're here. Where's Brother Gay? Dr. Gray? Dr. Gay?
Trying to get off the whole line.
Where is Dr. Gay? I don't see him. Is that everyone? Well, I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. It is an honor, privilege, and pleasure to be here with you today to celebrate the 250th anniversary of Prince Hall Freemasonry, not just in the United States, because it predates the United States of America. So for over 250 years, Prince Hall Masonry has existed. And so we're here, brothers and others are gathered to celebrate this anniversary. We do have a film prepared. So before I make any other remarks, I will defer to the video.
The Prince Hall Masons Organization is the oldest and largest black Masonic fraternity in the United States. We stopped by the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Georgia recently to learn more about this institution.
Masonry starts in the heart and not in the head. We like to take what we call a good man and make him a better man. And we can train him and bring him up and give them the knowledge and understanding of what it is to be out in this world. I think that makes them a good mason and a good man.
Grand Master Primus T. James joined the organization at the age of 18. He's coming up now on three years in this role, which presides over the state of Georgia.
We try to solve all the problems in the world within our memberships.
With a membership of 300,000 nationwide, this fraternity touts a diverse group of men from a variety of fields, from the Supreme Court to the basketball court, and a myriad of other professions, all contributing significantly, all leaving a mark.
When Maynard Jackson was about eight months old, his grandfather, John Wesley Dobbs, was serving as the Grand Master of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Georgia. And he wrote him a letter, and he told him about who he was and everything that he had done in his life and the type of man that he wanted him to grow up and be.
He says Dobbs felt he wouldn't get to see Jackson grow up, but hoped he would read this letter, follow the blueprint, and become an outstanding man.
Maynard read that letter and became the first Black mayor of Atlanta.
Steeped in activism, the Prince Hall Freemasons engaged in the fight for civil rights, supporting even housing organizations that aligned with its mission. The founder, Prince Hall, was a former slave who became a prominent businessman and abolitionist in Boston.
Prince Hall was a man that seemed to be determined to make sure that his people were seen as equals.
Prior to the Revolutionary War, and after learning of the Freemasons' mission of service and equality, Hall and a small group of free black men were denied admission into the city's all-white Masonic Lodge, but were initiated in 1775 by Lodge Number 441 of the Irish Registry, attached to the 38th British Foot Infantry at Castle William Island in Boston Harbor. Hall was elected Grand Master. In 1784, the Lodge was issued a charter granting them authority to meet, go in procession, and bury their dead. Memberships flourished. The Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Georgia was incorporated in July of 1890.
Masons, we just out there on the battlefield, just fighting for what's right.
The organization is celebrating 250 years of history and grateful for this recognition by the Atlanta City Council.
I retired from the city in 2020, and to go back to be honored by the city that you retired from is indeed an honor.
As elected members of the organization that are present and affiliated with the city of Atlanta and state of Georgia, if you could kind of make your way forward. And as I begin to read the proclamation, I'd like to have the mayor. Oh, you ready? Oh, okay, right here, all right. Just wanted to make sure. I have a proclamation from the city of Atlanta, and it reads in pertinent part as follows. "In honor of the 250th anniversary of Prince Hall Masonry, whereas on March 6, 1775, Prince Hall and 14 free African-American men were initiated into Freemasonry by Lodge Number 441 under the British Army in Boston, Massachusetts, marking the historic birth of African-American Freemasonry in America. Whereas Prince Hall, a visionary leader, patriot, and abolitionist, was granted a permit to meet and conduct Masonic ceremonies leading to the founding of the African Lodge on July 3, 1776, with Hall serving as the first worshipful master. And whereas in 1784, African Lodge received a charter from the Grand Lodge of England as African Lodge Number 459, becoming the first recognized Masonic Lodge established by men of African descent. Whereas, under Prince Hall's leadership, Freemasonry expanded beyond Boston to cities such as Philadelphia and Providence. And following his death, these lodges united to form the African Grand Lodge, which was renamed in 1847 as the Prince Hall Grand Lodge in his honor. And whereas, after the Civil War, Freemasonry flourished in the southern states. Reverend James M. Sims, a Baptist minister and free man from Savannah, Georgia, who had been initiated in Boston, returned to Georgia and with Masonic authority as a district deputy grand master, established Eureka Lodge Number 1, Free and Accepted Masons, on February 4, 1866. And whereas later that year, Hilton Lodge Number 13 and Banneker Lodge Number 38 were established in Georgia with warrants from the Grand Lodge of Massachusetts and Pennsylvania respectively. On June 24, 1870, these lodges united in Savannah, Georgia to form the Most Worshipful Grand Lodge of Georgia, Free and Accepted Masons, with Reverend Sims presiding as the first grand master. Whereas, over the decades, the Grand Lodge chartered more than 500 lodges and welcomed more than 20,000 members, weathering economic hardships such as the Great Depression, and to continuing to thrive today in the spirit of peace and harmony. Whereas, the Grand Lodge has formally incorporated on July 11, 1890 as the Most Worshipful Union Grand Lodge of the most ancient and honorable fraternity of African free and accepted masons for the state of Georgia, later renamed on July 19, 1950 as the Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge, Free and Accepted Masons jurisdiction of Georgia. Whereas, we honor 250 years of Prince Hall Freemasonry and its enduring legacy, a powerful force uplifting communities, advancing education, fostering leadership, and championing civil rights through unwavering dedication to brotherhood and service. Whereas, we recognize the distinguished leadership of the Honorable Primus T. James, 33 degrees, the 19th Most Worshipful Grand Master, whose steadfast commitment continues to guide and inspire principles of Masonry of the Prince Hall Freemasonry. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of the city of Atlanta, do hereby recognize the Prince Hall Freemasonry and celebrate its 250 years of enduring legacy and continued contributions to our society. On this day, we proclaim it as Prince Hall Freemasonry Day in our fair city, and witness thereof, I have called my, I have set my hand and have called the seal of the city of Atlanta to be here and to affixed. Congratulations. Oh, wow. Okay. Wait, oh, where are you?
She's up in the balcony.
All right, next we'll have the Honorable Andre Dickens.
All right, good afternoon, brothers. Good afternoon. It's good to be with all of you today to the 19th Most Worshipful Grand Master, the Honorable Primus T. James 33rd, and the brethren of the Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge jurisdiction of Georgia. I have this letter here that I wrote, and I'm honored to be here standing before you. 250 years. It's the 250th anniversary predating this whole country. As this country will celebrate, it's 250th anniversary soon. Today, we celebrate our brotherhood. And I'm honored to be joined with my toline with me. Byron Amos and I went over together. So he knows all about me. You guys, don't quiz him on it. And so as the 61st, huh? Yeah, yeah, St. James. As the 61st Mayor of Atlanta and a proud brother of the St. James Lodge, I'm honored to join the members of the Atlanta City Council and the people of this great city as we gather at Atlanta City Hall to commemorate 250 years of Prince Hall Masonry. This moment means a lot to me, the people of our city, and the generations of men whose lives have been shaped by this fraternity two and a half centuries ago. Brother Prince Hall and 14 other free black men founded this Masonic order at a time in our nation where most African-Americans were enslaved, denied basic freedoms, and had few opportunities for advancement. For 250 years, we have been a source of strength, guiding men toward a life of purpose dedicated to forging a brighter future for themselves and for those who would come after them. It has helped shape men who have become forces of positive change, whether in the fight for civil rights, the advancement of education, or through countless other contributions that continue to impact our society today. As a Freemason, I can attest to how these principles have shaped my life. And so, on behalf of the people of this great city, we are honored to commemorate this historic occasion. Signed by me, Mayor of Atlanta. Thank you.
Now our brother State Representative Teddy Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. What a great day it is. 250 years we celebrated, organization that have made men, created leaders, and directed history. A great leader once said that, "Some of us are called upon to plant seeds that will grow trees for shade we would never benefit from." And I think about people like my great-grandfather, who was a 33rd degree mason, and the seeds that he must have planted that may wait for people like me. Because we all stand on the shoulders of those that come before us. But it's our responsibility to make sure that our shoulders are broad enough to carry those into the next generation. So on behalf of the Georgia House of Representatives and the people of Columbus, Georgia, Mount Piscile Lodge 53, I want to say congratulations, brothers, to 250 years and 250 years more to go. Thank you.
Brother Byron Amos.
Behold how good and pleasant it is for brothers to dwell together in unity. I used to mumble that as I was brushing my teeth because that was one of the things we had to learn. But on October 21, 2023, I was welcomed into this family. I was welcomed into this brotherhood, and on that day, I learned what I thought I knew I didn't know. And what I know now is there are a lot more to know along the way. So that thirst for knowledge, to plant those seeds, is truly something that has been developed. And I will leave it at this. Long before this generation was ten toes down, standing on business, it was brothers like you, brothers like us, standing on the square that made it possible. I am Atlanta City Councilmember Byron Amos, a proud member of St. James, Number 4.
We have a few additional colleagues that'd like to speak. First, Councilwoman Andrea Boone, and then Councilmember Antonio Lewis will follow, and then we'll hear from our Most Worshipful Grand Master.
To Grand Master Primus James, today I would like to remember the Honorable Dean of the City Council, C.T. Martin, and the Honorable Marcel Reed, who poured so much into this organization. I learned so much about this organization from past Grand Master Barksdale. Thank you, sir. Thank you. And to Ed Bowen, who worked with my late father, the Reverend Joseph E. Boone. I am so proud of this organization. Congratulations on 250 years. Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis.
And I wouldn't just say thank you, Councilmember Bond, for this amazing recognition. Free man, brother Louis, brother Koshia, son of Mount Zion, Lodge Number 7. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure Scottish, right? I want to make sure that people know that we stand fully, fully, ten toes down and on the square. When they say I'm part of the generation that they say is standing ten toes down, but super proud to know that last year, I crossed those sands and I'm standing in the square too. So, super happy to be about that. Thank you.
And now we will hear from our Most Worshipful Grand Master, Primus T. James. Come on up, Deputy.
Good afternoon. Y'all understand being bow and told. My name is Deputy Grand Master Jonathan White, and I humbly serve this jurisdiction under the leadership of our 19th Most Worshipful Grand Master, the Honorable Primus James. He wanted me to acknowledge a few people who are here present today. And if I could, acknowledge our Grand Senior Warden, Derwin Canty. Just raise your hand. Grand Junior Warden, Reggie Walker. Grand Secretary, Antonio White. One of the strong ones of whose standards we show, whose shoulders we stand upon, past Grand Master Benjamin Barksdale. Past Grand Master Ramsey Davis Jr. Past Grand Master Corey Shakaford Sr. Of course, acknowledging from officers from across the state, we have all of our Grand Lodge other appointed officers, as well as all of these brothers here who assemble today, not to mention those who have already come to the podium, who are leaders in the City of Atlanta and the state of Georgia that are serving in these political positions. Thank you all for coming in and showing up and showing out. Thank you. I'm nervous, y'all. As y'all know, it becomes my duty to introduce my brother as well as my friend, the Honorable Primus T. James. Please receive him.
Thank you. Just like to say good evening. And once again, give an honor to God, who's the head of my life, as well as my household. I'd like to say to the Honorable Mayor Andre Dickens and Councilman Michael Bond and other members of the Atlanta Council and all city officers present, I thank you for that awesome recognition. To Brother Bill Gay, distinguished brothers of the Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge for the jurisdiction of Georgia, devoted sisters of the Prince Hall Grand Chapter, Order of the Eastern Stars, and all our visitors, I greet you in the bonds of brotherhood and peace. I stand before you today, honored to accept this historic proclamation on behalf of the jurisdiction of Georgia, where I, Primus T. James, humbly serve as the 19th Most Worshipful Grand Master. Today, we celebrate 250 years of an enduring legacy built on the principles of faith, fortitude, and fraternity. Prince Hall Mason was born in a time of struggle, yet it has thrived in every generation since because its foundation was rooted in truth and service, an unwavering belief in the potential of our people. We have been builders, not just of lodges, but of communities. We have been keepers, not just of our traditional style, but of hope. In the spirit of brotherhood, we have strived every day to continue that remarkable legacy through mentoring our youth and supporting our seniors, uplifting our communities and upholding the principle of charity, integrity, and unity. This proclamation is more than a document. It is a treatment of the lives church that Barry has broken and the future still being built by Prince Hall Masons. Across this great state, as we honor our past, we're committed to an even greater future, one where our light comes to shine for generations to come. On behalf of the Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Georgia and this entire jurisdiction, I extend our deepest gratitude. Again, I would like to thank Councilman Bond, Dr. William Gay, for the efforts in ensuring that this presentation will be recorded in the history of Prince Hall Masons. May God bless you. May God bless our craft, and may God continue to bless the City of Atlanta. Thank you.
Yes. Now, we're going to gather up with our colleagues on the council, and we're going to take a photo in here, and then we're going to go out to the steps in the atrium. We will proceed out there to gather for a larger photo in total. And so, if we can just step up in front of the podium with the mayor's letter and proclamation. I'll carry it for you.
Can y'all see the camera?
They got it on you. I'm good.
Yes.
All right. Now your first. And three, two, one. Full cell. Mayor. Go back, please.
Brothers don't even count like y'all. I don't know. We know Jake well enough. We raised a hand. We know what it is.
Thank you. Thank you. Eight years.
Eight years.
Eight years. I'm running for president now.
You said, you said connect with Dave's council.
That's the one I tell you about. His daughter, his daughter went to school with you. Well, I gave her the microphone. All right.
Still campus. I ought to stand, I ought to stand back here and do this. I probably not need to picture, but I go, that go be ugly.
Slide right beside you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. Next, I would like to invite Councilmember Marcia Overstreet forward and all of those who are here to celebrate the contemporary artist Freddie Stiles to please come and join us up on the podium.
Mr. Stiles and everyone with you, just come forward.
They look so distinguished.
Yeah, that's funny.
Wait a minute. Am I, can you can probably hear me like.
Got it. Know it. You come on up. Stefan, now that we have the podium to ourselves, this is Mr. Stiles. Come on over. Hi. Come on over. You come over here.
How are you doing? Beautiful.
Give everybody just a second to come on in, get settled. So this proclamation is about celebrating contemporary artist Freddie Stiles. Yep. Those in the art world, you are a huge name. It is my honor to give you this proclamation today. And I'm going to read this proclamation, then we'll hear from September. She's here, and then you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, and then our very own Camille Love will speak also. So, we're going to have you last. All right? So first, I'll read this. From the Atlanta City Council, recognizing contemporary artist Freddie Stiles. Whereas Freddie Stiles, a native son of Georgia, a proud resident of Atlanta, and has long stood as a leading voice in contemporary art, American art, devoting his life and work to abstractionism while masterfully weaving elements of natural world into his richly layered and evocative creations. Whereas, Mr. Stiles' distinguished career has been marked by a unique fusion of artistry and environmental reverence, where his passion for gardening informs his visual work, resulting in a body of art that reveals the profound interconnection between nature and human creativity. And whereas employing a distinct and environmental technique using crinkled kaolin coated fax paper on wet acrylic and silver jaisod surfaces. Ooh, how artsy. Freddie Stiles, that is so artsy. Freddie Stiles produces works uncommon resonance as seen in his acclaimed Evolving and Silver Trees collage series, which I've seen, with each piece reflecting a delicate dance between control and unpredictability. And whereas, Mr. Stiles' visionary work has garnered local, national, and international acclaim, including prestigious exhibitions at institutions such as the High Museum of Art, the Georgia Museum of Art, and the American Embassies abroad, as well as inclusion in renowned private and public collections across the globe. And whereas, his commitment to artist mentorship and public service is evidenced by his role as an artist-in-residence at Morehouse Brown, I mean Morris Brown College, Clark Atlantic University, Clayton State University, and Spelman College, and as gallery director and curator of City Gallery East, where he advanced the City of Atlanta's art. On loan program brought contemporary art to civic spaces. And whereas, Mr. Stiles' achievement also included major commissions and honors, such as the Vodka, the Absolute Vodka Artist Campaign, a cultural exchange grant from the King-Baldwin Foundation, and purchase awards from the Atlanta University Arts Annual and the Atlanta Life Insurance Company. Whereas, through decades of creativity, community engagement, and artistic innovation, Freddie Stiles has not only shaped the cultural landscape of Atlanta, but has also offered generations of audiences and emerging artists a window into the nature's existence of spiritual depth of abstraction. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council on behalf of the Atlanta residents, do hereby recognize and proclaim this as Freddie Stiles Day. I will say that even your proclamation is artsy. It is poetic. There is a definite flow there. So, in that vein, we're going to pass the mic to September, Ms. Gray.
Thank you so much, City of Atlanta and Councilmember Marcia Overstreet, for this wonderful honor, honoring just an incredible artist that's a huge part of the fabric of this city that's been creating for 65 years plus. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Stiles for about 34 years, and we actually met maybe 35 years ago at Camille Love's Gallery, one of the first African-American women-owned galleries here in Atlanta. And it's evolved over time, where I was a collector of his work, and now I'm representing his work, and I'm extremely proud that we have this honor to acknowledge him. As you know, the arts is a huge part in the fabric of a society, of being an interesting society. So, I thank you again for honoring this amazing artist that has been. that has been so part, so much a part of Atlanta and what's going on in the city culturally and through the arts, um, as well as Mayor Andre Dickens, who's not with us at the moment, but I know he is sending his well wishes as well. Thank you so much. Again, my name is September Gray with September Gray Fine Art Gallery, and I am the vehicle which shows the work and gives people the opportunity to enjoy it, collect it, and appreciate this amazing artist. So thank you again to the City of Atlanta and those that are on this stage with me that are a big part of the family of Freddie Stiles. We all truly love him and are honored to be here. And I just wanna say thank you again, Marcia, for this honor and the opportunity to speak and honor Freddie. Thank you.
Of course. Camille Love.
Ah, Freddie. I love Freddie Stiles. Um, as September mentioned, I used to have a gallery before I joined the City of Atlanta, and Freddie was one of the artists that I represented. But beyond that, Freddie was my friend. Um, I don't know how long I've known Freddie, but it's lo-
Late seventies, mid-seventies?
Yeah, it's been a long time. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You were with IBM?
Yeah, I was with IBM at the time, but I, you know, I collected Freddie and, uh, then when I got in my gallery, I represented Freddie. What I know about Freddie is that he is such a generous soul. He has mentored so many young artists. Uh, he has shown them how you have to be persistent and deliberate and how you just have to stick with it. And a lot of artists don't understand that. He's also, through the longevity of his career, has taught collectors that you actually are investing in the artist when you collect their work. You're allowing them to continue to, um, create because they can pay their bills, uh, because you have supported them. And we also know that the hand of the artist is left in the work. So when you get something original by Freddie, then you're getting a piece of him. And Freddie, we are so proud that you're a part of the Atlanta cultural scene. And as he knows, I do love him. Thank you.
Now, we'll, we'll hear from the artist Freddie Stiles himself. Please introduce your family. Don't forget that part.
I'm surrounded by, I think of them as my angels because on February twenty-eighth of this year, my house burned down and I lost everything. I only escaped with, I was, I was working on a painting. I only escaped with the clothes I was wearing and I lost a little bit of hair right here. Um, cause when I'm working, my hair doesn't look like this. I look more like Albert Einstein, so the hair was standing out. So when I discovered this fire, I went downstairs, a blast of hot air singed some hair right here. Um, but since then, I've been surrounded by what I think of as my angels. Carl Christian, um, was one of the people I called when I realized that my house was gone. And I said to him, Carl, I have to come to your house later because my house is burning down. And he said, I will come and get you. And he did, and I've been at his home ever since. Since then, my parents, my parents have stepped up to lead the effort to help me rebuild my home. September Gray is a part of that. Lucy and Raymond Allen are all a part of it. And, um, oop. Um, so I, I think of them as my angels. Now I don't know where to start. I know, I would know where to start. In nineteen fifty-two, a scared, hurt, littles kid rode the train from Madison, Georgia to Atlanta with, with sister and his mother, with no thought of ever accomplishing anything. And boy, I've come a long way since then.
Yes, you have.
Now, an important part of my history with Atlanta was left out of the proclamation, which gives me the opportunity to tell stories.
Oh, boy.
You know, I love stories. People who know me know I love stories. Uh, every first, every second and fourth Thursday, for six years, I appeared in these chambers to serve as artist representative on the Urban Design Commission. I don't, don't think my service was all that memorable, but there was some bright spots. I always thought of myself as kind of enabling them to make quorum. But there were times, times when I, when I sort of buzzed in. And I'll share three quick stories. Once there was a female architect representing the renovation of a school with these what I call slither windows. And it was shortly after the DeKalb County Jail was completed. So I buzzed in and said, I attended Crogman Elementary School and Price High School with expansive windows. I said, your design looks like the DeKalb County Jail. So she clutched up her ears and we moved on. Um, another moment was when a group of people appeared before the Urban Design Commission wanting to change Cone Street to honor Zenona Clayton. And I said, I've met Mrs. Clayton many times. She's an elegant, beautiful woman. Why would she want that ugly street to have her name? I said, I think what you should do is turn this enthusiasm for changing the name of Cone Street into a fundraiser and maybe purchase one of the, these street-level parking lots and make it a small park with a bust or statue of her in it and honor her in bronze and not tin. And then there appears the resistance. The Board of Education appeared before us wanting to tear down Crogman Elementary School. So my fellow commissioners talked about its architectural qualities, and I think it was designed by the same architect who designed the old city hall. But I knew, I buzzed in with a sheepish smile on my face and I said, I know something about Crogman that none of you know. I said, Crogman Elementary School is important to Atlanta's historic black community. I said, I attended fifth, sixth, and seventh grade at Crogman Elementary School. And the reason I'm here is because I was sent to a room to talk to this lady at Crogman Elementary School who suggested I should be an artist. At the time, in the late fifties, I didn't know that, were we colored? What were we, black? No, we weren't black. I think we were Negro. I didn't know a Negro could be an artist. So she told me about Hail Woodruff and Henry O'Tanen, both of whom had ties to Atlanta. And she let us call her Miss Jeannie Jackson, but I later found out that she was Maita Jackson's sister. So the Masons aren't the only one here with connections to Maita Jackson. Um, and I think that's it.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and it's like a, I show with Camille many years ago now. I'm showing work with September Gray and thank all of you for coming. Thank you, Mayor Dickens and the City Council for honoring me. I was telling someone earlier, I first met Mayor Dickens at the home of my best friend Barney Sims, hosted a brunch, and he was, that he had not announced for mayor yet, but Barney told me he was going to be running for mayor and I decided then that I would vote for him.
Nice.
I think I did it, I think that I, I did everything.
You did.
He did.
I have.
He's not more than everything.
I'd like to add one more thing. I currently have a major exhibit of my work at the University of Maryland Global Campus. It's up until July thirteenth. Fortunately, all of the work had been shipped before my fire.
Nice.
We have any colleagues that would like to speak? Okay, with that, we're going to take a picture with you. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this for you.
Thank you for doing it.
Want to sit it up here?
Yes, we're gonna go up.
I'm also on. Yes, okay. Okay. Extremely honored, extremely honored to, to be a part of the proclamation for a hundred and one years of service today. Mister brother graduate, the Atlanta City Council has the, has given me the opportunity to honor and present the proclamation honoring Gregory Smith for his fifty-one years with the Department of Watershed Management. I think that deserves a round of applause. This is an essential worker, a central worker, frontline worker for the city of Atlanta and for the United States of America. And I have the, I have this distinct honor of giving the highest honor that the City of Atlanta City Council person can give any person. So it's the highest honor that a council can give a person. So it reads, honoring Gregory Smith for his fifty-one years with the, with the Department of Watershed Management. Whereas Gregory Smith has honorably served the city of Atlanta for fifty-one years and one month, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to the Department of Watershed Management, Office of Linear Infrastructure. And whereas, Mr. Smith began his distinguished career with the city of Atlanta on February eleventh, nineteen seventy-four. And through hard work, resilience, and dedication, he rose to the position of Watershed Construction Maintenance Worker II, a role in which he has diligently served in for over twenty years and two months. And whereas, during his tenure, Mr. Smith played a critical role in installing and maintaining vital infrastructure, including fire hydrants, water meters, and water mains of various sizes, ensuring the integrity and reliability of the city's water distribution center. System and whereas, he was instrumental in desegregating the water department, overcoming discriminatory practices and actively participating in civil rights marches to advocate for better working conditions for himself and his colleagues. And whereas, Mr. Smith contributed to major infrastructure projects across Atlanta, including Coca-Cola, Underground Atlanta, State Farm Arena, and Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, further solidifying his lasting impact on the city's growth and development. And whereas, his leadership and mentorship in training new employees has ensured the safe and effective repair of water main breaks, fire hydrants, and meters, leaving behind, leaving behind a legacy of skilled and prepared workers. And whereas, Mr. Smith's dedication, perseverance, and impact will felt, will be forever felt for generations to come. And his retirement marks the end of an era of excellence in public service. And whereas, the city of Atlanta also acknowledges and celebrates the retirement of his brother, his brother Michael Smith, as both siblings conclude their careers in public service together, a testament to their family's commitment to the betterment of community. Now therefore it be proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council on behalf of the citizens of this great city, do hereby recognize and commend Gregory Smith for his extraordinary service, commendable achievements, and invaluable contributions made to the city of Atlanta. And, and so first, I wanna ask if any of my colleagues would like to say anything? And so I'll ask if our commissioner would like to say anything? Oh, come on, our, our new watershed commissioner, Mr. Arlen.
Thank you, Councilmember. The Office of Linear Infrastructure, what do they do? They, uh, they bring water to your faucets. Councilmember. Um, Councilmember Lewis taught me that. We say faucet here.
They take water away from your house. And the job that requires a lot of work.
Which in Atlanta can be pretty hot and uncomfortable. And our staff that work in the Office of Linear Infrastructure, they, uh, they sacrifice day and night to keep water running into homes. And fifty years is a long time, fifty-one years. And when Gregory Smith started, the number one song in America in nineteen seventy-four was "The Way We Were" by Barbra Streisand. To show you how much things have changed in his years of service, Luther by Kendrick Lamar is the number one song in America. So I'm so appreciative of the work, uh, that the Smith brothers have brought to Atlanta. It's emblematic of all the work that our frontline staff do every day anonymously. And I can't say anything more about that, other than I too started as a frontline worker like you.
So, and, and when our commissioner talks about faucets, we know, I, I grew up in, in, on Cleveland Avenue. My grandmother always say, turn that faucet off. And I grew up drinking faucet water. So my goal is, is to make it to where people can start by drinking faucet water in Atlanta because we do know that the price of that bottled water is getting- Mister, our, Mister Smith, the man of the hour. But first, does any one of his colleagues, any of his coworkers wanna say anything about him? Good afternoon. Um, when I started this job, the first person I met was Mister Smith.
When I started this job, the first person I met was Mister Smith. We worked at Chastain Park. It was hard work then. A lot of the things that we use nowadays wasn't, uh, was just a picture or a token we could look at. Like the backhoes, the power drills, none of that was able to use by us. Mister Smith made sure we learned everything with our hands, with our hands and our minds. Doing water work is very hard work. It's very dangerous. We had a lot of friends that got seriously hurt. But one thing I can remember, um, when I first started, we jumped out the truck, and I remember it plain as day. We jumped out the truck, and I'm looking at the machine just sitting on the trailer. And I looked at everybody else they got a shovel. I looked at the machine. When the next time I turned around, I got popped in the head. Said, "You're looking at the wrong thing. You grabbed a shovel." So I appreciate him showing me hard work pays off, because the hard work that he showed me how to do led me to this position today as a Watershed Manager. And I just want to say I appreciate you, and I thank you, and I love you, man.
Any of, any of his other colleagues would like to say anything? So the man of the moment, man of the hour, for 51 years of service, you got, you, you started when Mayor Manu Jackson came in. And so we, we truly, yes, 1974, that's, that's a huge and big year for our city. So you've been a part of the uplift of our city. So the man of the hour, Mister Gregory Smith, come on to the, come on down.
Well, well, well. I thank y'all and the God above, and my family, my mother, my daddy, my sisters and brothers, for letting me be here today to have this honor. Thank y'all.
And so I have everybody come to the front so we can take a photo. Yep, that's what council's real good at. Come on. I got you. We gonna take some photos up front.
Thank you all. Next we'll move to remarks from the public. Again, I would like to remind everybody you have two minutes unless you've been yielded time on the list by someone else. Um, I, uh, we cannot yield on the fly. Uh, I will do my best to pronounce your name, but if I get it mispronounced, please, um, do correct on the record. First up will be Kevin Bacon. You'll have up to two minutes.
Hi, um, hi, um, just wanted to say, he grew on me. I don't mean it that way. I, I, I mean it as, as a person, as a politician. The mayor, I respect the mayor. I used to not like the mayor, but I respect the decisions that he's made. I respect his leadership. And, uh, thank you for holding this ceremony this afternoon for, uh, to honor the, what it looked like black man. I mean, we, we need to honor black women as well. But thank you for, for this, uh, celebration, to honor, to honor these achievements. And, um, when I think of black excellence, that, that's what they exemplify, black excellence. And, um, although we see black excellence today, it is hard for a black man to achieve, to be a good man in society, in, in society today. Although Atlanta is the most surveilled city in America, people still do what they want to do. And by you, the city council, y'all think that crime is okay as long as you don't kill anybody. All right? You can't go on the martyr train without getting robbed. A lot of people ride the martyr train because that's their only means of transportation. Some people don't, don't have to. Some, some people, it's an option. White people, I told a white professional, I said, "I feel, I feel, I don't feel safe riding the martyr train." And he said, "I ride martyr too." I said, "Well, they don't target you. They target people that look like me." So, so when you shutting down facilities and I, I don't want people to see people locked up. But people that are, that are destroying the community, they need to be dealt with accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Henry Jordan. You'll have up to two minutes.
Give it unto the sweetest God everyone that's here. Enter ye in at the straight gate. For wide is the gate, and broad is the way that leads you to destruction. And many there be which go in their act. Matthew seven, chapter 13, verse. Enter ye in at the straight gate. Narrow means that one must come through the narrow gate in order to reach the path that leads to eternal life. I attempt to tell James Griffin and others that I desire Jesus' way, the straight gate. Where were false prophets which come to you in sheep's clothing? But in will they are ravening wolves. Matthew seven, chapter 15, verse. False prophets appear in sheep clothing, but are in reality ravening wolves. James so may his wife cheated on him, and he didn't tell me of his ten outside children in the marriage. Have the workers of iniquity no knowledge, who eat up my people as they eat bread? They have not called upon God. Psalm fifty-three, chapter four, first. While the fool may deny that God is the righteous, finds in him the object of hopeful prayer for deliverance. Can no one deliver you like Jesus can? Why boast of thyself, and mischief almighty man? The goodness of God endure continually. Psalm fifty-two, chapter first, verse. Because of his betrayal, though it will be destroyed, the righteous will learn from it. And David, a righteous man, will continue to flourish. Christ says, "It is a blessing to seek his righteous will, and it's a curse to obey the devil." If God give me a job that protects of his people, and you fight against it, you fighting against your life that Christ want to have, want you to have. And you won't see it until it come to pass. Cause I've seen it, and I'm telling you about it. Warning you about your way of destruction is the way of death and not life.
Thank you. Next will be Valerie Anderson. Due to yield the time, you'll have up to 10 minutes today.
Good afternoon. I would like to, well, Mr. Born is, Mr. Bond is not here, but I would, um, wanted to thank him for coming out to my son's celebration for Mother's Day. So that was very, very good to see that. He did follow through on that. But I'm here to express that I am at the mercy of a dysfunctional system. A dysfunctional system. Oh, and before I get into that, I would like to also thank Ms. Batieri for all these, um, words of encouragement, and for just always asking me how I'm feeling, how I'm doing. That means a lot to me. Your concern, because kindness is free. Kindness, respect, all of that is free. And to Mr. Faruki, um, I would like to thank you also for, um, every time I send you, um, message about the DUIs with the police and stuff, you always get back to me, because I always go back to, "That was the first question that you asked, and nine months in, I'm still dealing with it." So thank you for always getting back to me. And Ms. Overstreet, thank you for introducing yourself to me today. Appreciate that. And, um, you know, like I said, kindness, showing kindness is free. And Ms., um, Collins, yes, you introduced yourself also to me. So thank you very much. Yes, back to what I was saying now. Yeah, so I'm at the mercy of an ineffective dysfunctional system. Meaning, Sol Folt, Sol Fulton arrested Melvin Potter. He posted a bond, he got out. So that's a failure. That's the ineffective, that's dysfunction. Judges, um, had warrants on him. Those wasn't upheld. That's dysfunction. Again, like I've always said, if it was my son, all of this was, would, would never happen. Again, the judge, I mean, the jail denied the warrant, the hospital denied the warrant. Ineffectiveness and dysfunction. Again, if that was my son, that would never happen. He, my son would never gotten away with all the stuff that Melvin Potter, murdering Melvin, lawless drunk Potter, has gotten away with. And this is a system that I'm supposed to believe in? This is seriously a system that I'm supposed to believe in, that don't do the right, do right by my son being murdered by a lawless drunk who has a record, been on probation with a, um, for DUI? It can't be. And I'm here to let you all know today, I don't accept or acknowledge what murdering Melvin Potter did to my son. At some point I'm gonna have to, to get on with my life. But as for right now, no. I'm not accepting it, and I'm not acknowledging what Melvin Potter did to my son. Melvin Potter murdered my son. And I would also like to thank the media for, um, showing up to my house also, but I would like to, um, correct Channel Five as far as stating that my son had an argument with Melvin Potter. No such thing happened. My son was trying to de-escalate a situation on Melvin murdering Potter's behalf. But he killed my son. Why? Because he was drunk? Because if he wasn't drinking, he would have known that my son was trying to protect him, helping him. So why did you kill my son? Why did you murder my son? And then nine months in, in three months, it'll be one year, I lost my son, that my son was murdered. And nothing has been done. Nothing has been done. Is this normal? It, it can't be normal. For, for Melvin Potter to get every benefit, because this is how I feel, Melvin Potter has gotten every benefit. My son is the victim. Melvin Potter is the murderer, the murdering, lawless drunk police officer. And I'm going to state every time, if it was my son, he would not be afforded all the stuff that Melvin Potter is getting away with. And I stand by what I say, that APD is covering his ass, and everybody else, as far as the system, is covering his ass. I don't give a damn who feel, how would they feel, but this is how I feel, because I did not rent my son out to the system. Okay? I did not rent my son out to the system, and I'm pissed that I have no control over what happening to my son. Not a word about what happened to my son. Not one word, nine months in. All I know is lawless drunk murdering Melvin Potter is who murdered my son. Nine months in. Where is the justice? There's, it can't be, this is normal. The ineffectiveness of this dysfunctional system that I have to rely on for justice. It can't be. It cannot be. So how am I supposed to feel about all this stuff Melvin Potter has gotten away with? Like I said before, if it was my son killing an officer, they'd have dragged his ass to jail, if he did get to jail. Beat him before he got to jail. Okay? My son wouldn't have had a chance. My son would not have had a chance if, if he did, it was the other way around, and he killed a police officer. So why is it different that he's an officer, and my son is the victim, but he's gained the benefit of every doubt? Why is that? Again, why is that? Because there's no way Melvin Potter record, okay? As plain as day as it is that he, he should not at least be fired. His record alone should have made him have gotten fired. But no, he's home collecting a check. He's home collecting a check. No accountability at all for what, for murdering my young, 38-year-old son. And I'm not, and I'm supposed to be fine with that? But you know what I always say? If the plan is to wear me down, you are gonna be thinking a long, long time. Because I'm not going anywhere by any means. Death is going to have to stop me from coming down here. Because like I said, I'm a, I'm a come, I'm a show up, I'm a be present, because Melvin Potter needs to be fired, charged, and go to prison for what he did to my son. He need, in that order. He needs to be charged. He's not, he need, he don't need to be home doing whatever he, because guess what? I'm sure Mo- Mother's Day, he called his mother and said whatever he said to her. And Mother's Day fell on my son's birthday. I didn't get that kiss. I didn't get that kiss, Mother's Day. I didn't get that hug, I didn't get that "Mom, I love you", which I never get again. Never. Because of some lawless drunk police officer who was on probation for a DUI when he murdered my son. His record is not clean. His record is not clean. So why is he still on the force? Why is APD, or why is the system still covering this lawless drunk? Why? And nobody's here to give me an answer. The district, because I had to wait months to get the GBI to speak with me. I guess, again, I have to wait months for the district attorney to reach out to me? Again, I did not rent my son to the system. My son is my son. Valerie Lance Anderson. I am, I am his mother. Not the dysfunctional, ineffective system that I'm witnessing. Okay? I need answers. I want answers, and I'm demanding answers. Because, like I said, I'm not going to let this go, Melvin Potter murdering my son. That's not going to happen at all. So, yes, I am going to be present. I don't give a damn who tired of seeing me, haring me, or what. But I'ma be here. Valerie Lance Anderson, Devon Anderson Jr., mama. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Liza Ramsey. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Liza Ramsey. I'm a professional driver on the Uber Black platform. I'm also an organizer with Atlanta Rideshare Drivers Union. I have invested heavily in my vehicle certification to provide a premium service. But despite our professionalism, we're being set up to fail, especially at Hatchfield-Jackson Airport. Our current city regulations and platform rules are putting us in impossible situations. Right now, Uber Black drivers face a hard choice at the airport. Risk a ticket, or risk losing income? Because the city only allows us to operate on one platform at a time. We can't accept requests from Uber, X, or other services. We wait sometimes for hours, and then when a Black request finally comes in, we rush to pick up the client, only to get ticketed or chased away by airport authorities for picking up Black riders. We're not soliciting, we're working. Yet we penalize as if we're doing something wrong. The airport won't issue my car sticker, even though I have limousine plates because I drive a Volvo XC90. For some unknown reason, the airport has deemed this car unqualified for airport pickups. On the other hand, I can't use the rideshare hang tag either because I'm not supposed to do rideshare while I have limo plates. In addition to that, I'm not supposed to wait for rides at the airport. Uber and Lyft has to wait for rides on Virginia Avenue, but they are the businesses ask the police to make drivers leave. If this sounds confusing, it's because it is. One more issue I have is I'm losing my ability to do Uber and Lyft Black SUV at the end of this month. Black SUV is the highest tier on the platform, so this will change my income quite a bit. It's very disappointing since I chose to get a premium car, but we now lose money. All of these issues create anxiety, financial risk, and confusion for drivers. Professional drivers are being punished for trying to do our jobs. Meanwhile, the city loses out on maintaining a reliable, high-quality transportation system for airport commuters. We're asking you to work with us to fix this. We need a designated waiting station near the airport for Uber Black drivers. We need protection from ticketing while performing like this to make it work.
Thank you. Time has expired.
We need the ability.
Thank you. Next up will be Pahendra Chohan. You'll have up to two minutes.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, honorable council members. My name is Pahendra Chohan. I have been a full-time rideshare driver in Atlanta for the past five years. In March last year, I made a bold, costly investment to purchase a brand-new Tesla Model Y, so I could offer premium limousine services and qualify for Uber Lyft and Uber and Lyft's high-end Black rideshare categories. I based this decision on the official list of eligible vehicles provided by Uber and Lyft on their platform. But this, but that now is under threat. Uber recently announced that as of September, Tesla Model Y's will no longer qualify for Uber Black. Instead, my vehicle will be relegated to a lower-tier service like Uber X, Comfort, and Uber Share, despite still delivering the same premium services and experiences for my ride days. This means that my earnings could be slashed by over fifty percent, whilst my operating costs either stay the same or continue to rise. Council members, we are the workers, mothers, fathers, immigrants, and neighbors are doing everything we can to contribute to our communities, but we are being squeezed out by billion-dollar corporations that hide behind apps while threatening and treating us as disposable. This is a call to action. We urgently request the formation of a TNC task force that brings together city, state officials, drivers, and platform representatives to ensure fair, transparent, and accountable practices in this industry. I take this opportunity to thank you all.
Thank you. Next will be Felipe Martinez. Due to your time, you have up to four minutes.
Yeah, I have, thank you so much. We've been going to transportation meetings from time to time. Sorry, I'm a little stumbled and a little bit upset because of the woman who lost her son. We do a lot of, I'm a rideshare driver advocate and organizer, social justice organizer. And I have a big, long speech here, but I'm gonna pass on it because I just want to tell you from my heart. Been organizing drivers since 2018. Came here in Georgia. Three years ago, started organizing rideshare drivers here in Georgia. There is a big problem with Uber and Lyft and TNCs exploiting people of color, women, and Uber and Lyft drivers. We know this. We're other drivers, we know how to use the app. Again, we've been going, we see familiar faces, they know us. We've been going to transportation commission meeting. But we want to ask for the city council to put together a TNC task force commission. It would be investigating, recommending solutions to address low driver pay and ensure fair compensation. Establishing clear and comprehensive regulations and oversight in driverless vehicles. Developing and implementing stringent safety protocols, oversight mechanisms, prevent exploitation of TNC platforms for human trafficking. We know there's issues here with the TNC regulations. The state of Georgia is like the Wild, Wild West. And it needs to stop. We understand corporations run the state of Georgia and maybe the city of Atlanta, but it's the people that move. It's these people in the audience. It's the people listening. It's the people in the streets. It's the people under the bridges. Not the corporations. But the corporations have us like this. Uber and Lyft have us like this. We deserve a voice. We move the people in Georgia safely, expeditiously, especially at the airport. We believe that establishing the TNC task force or commission with the crucial involvement of the rideshare drivers, the Atlanta City Council can take proactive steps to ensure fair, safe transportation ecosystem for all. This is an opportunity to support hard-working individuals to keep our city moving and safety and well-being. And I got this to give to everybody, it's just a whole speech or whatever, but you have to understand this, I'm gonna give a little bit of example. Pabendra just bought a vehicle, Tesla, sixty, eighty grand last year because Uber said he could use it. Uber now said he can't use that car. What's he gonna do? He can't use the Tesla anymore because Uber snapped the figures and said, "Well, you know, you can't use the seventy-five thousand dollar car now. You'll have to do DoorDash and get paid less." Same thing with Lisa. Lisa bought a vehicle. She wants to do limousines and Uber Black at the airport. Now the airport says that she can't use it because of stringent certifications that you can't even find anywhere on the website. Things need to change in Atlanta, especially with the airport and the TNC. Sorry, I'm very animated, but this is how I am. I believe in labor, I believe in people, I believe in social justice. I believe in the city council. I believe in you. Believe in us. Believe in the people of Atlanta. Because we will keep coming. Again, we want change, we believe in change. So I'm hoping that you guys will, city council will put together a TNC task force in which we could work cohesively with the Transportation Committee. And Mr. Cavendish, I believe, is on the Transportation Committee in the Transportation Department in Atlanta. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'll make sure everybody gets one of these envelopes. Thank you. I'm Felipe Martinez.
Next up will be Helen D. Williams. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Let me tell you what that "D" mean. It means Delilah. I am not Delois. I'm having an issue with identity theft, and that's who they want me to be. Now, I'm also here to speak in reference of Cook Park. I was there last night, I tried to stop a fight. And in that process, it just didn't work out well. It was about fifty kids. And not to tell the whole story, I'm here to request and ask Byron, Councilman Byron, to fix a Park Rangers at a timeframe at Cook Park as a permanent schedule. And the reason I'm standing before you, Mr. Byron, to say that because I tried to stop a fight. A lady came up behind me, I thought it was a child. But that woman straight out cold cocked me. She hit me. And before I knew it, I was finna get off my bicycle and go right into it like I was a knuckerhead. But God stopped me. So I'm here because I had no sleep. But I wanted to look you in the eye and to say to you, "Cook Park is on fire. We need your help in reference of monitoring how it goes. You know how it roll. Just help us do a little bit better." Now that I have thirty-nine seconds, let me tell you why I keep coming here. It's because of identity theft. If they would have left me alone, I wouldn't have to come down here and tell you that Rodney Cook is signing my name. James Arpad is signing my name. It's unfair. And I would like to tell Mr. Rodney Cook, I live at 642 Lester Street. You invited me to a meeting that I didn't know about, which had Greater Piney Grove members sitting there. Mr. Rodney Cook, I met your mother. I need to see you at my address. You know where I live, 642.
Thank you. Next will be LA Pink. Due to yield the time, you'll have up to six minutes.
Mr. President, I wanted to respond.
Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Amos, sorry, I missed you. Hold on just a second.
Just want to say thank you, Ms. Williams, for bringing that to our attention. It was probably two years ago that a paper I sponsored along with my colleague, Councilmember Bond, and I created the Park Rangers. Now, we're in budget season, and we're actually talking about how do we completely fund that and expand it. We will talk to the Park Rangers to see what their schedules are. I know we're mostly there during heavy peak hours. Don't know what time of day you was talking about. But just want to thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we are working on our only Cook Park, all of our well-used parks in the city. So thank you.
May I respond?
Just briefly.
Okay, just briefly. Thank you for responding. And just to say, the timeframe, if you can iterate that, will be five to twelve. Children get out, five to twelve.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Pink, you'll have up to six minutes due to your time.
I might not even need all that six. So, of course, I come down here today, haven't been down here in a little while. Been handling a couple of things in the community with the homeless up under the bridge, helping them get into their places. So big shots out to partners of homes, of for homes, and partnering with a couple of other organizations to get our people up off the street. And it's, once again, a show. Shit show, actually, right here in Atlanta. You know, I'm not saying it's a bad thing to give the proclamations to the people because, you know, I'm not saying none of them don't deserve it, but some of y'all be giving proclamations for friendship. You know, some of these proclamations ain't because nobody done did nothing in the community or doing anything in the community. You know, we just seen a whole bunch of black men, and I'm not knocking their organization, but we need them at the jail. She just said, the Park Rangers that you just said, they your brothers. I mean, they can't get on some horses and go down there? I mean, I don't know. But I feel like if we gonna honor some black men, let they asses be doing some real work. Okay? And that's just being one hundred percent real. We are tired of the proclamation cover-up. We tired of the shows, we tired of the faux-hors-fauxs. We tired of all of this. Know why? Because none of this benefits us as black people, as people in general, white people, Hispanics. Everybody y'all want to fight for? It ain't beneficial. You know why it ain't beneficial? Because the Democrats walked out for five, five transgenders, five. And only one bill was passed. One. One. So while we come down here and we're going off about this, and we're talking about that, we going off about the jail and the officers that's killing our babies and all this stuff, y'all have five inmates that they walked out for. The demon rats. States. That they, people come up and we done voted in. And I say, "We"? You know why? Because my elders called me to ask me who they should vote for. My community asks me who they should vote for. That's the reason why I get out here and I try to push. But what we're seeing now is that it doesn't matter about who you push because if you're going to honor Mayor Dickhead and say because he came up here and stood with y'all, he's great with all of the dirt he doing. If we gonna allow him to pop up at the homeless houses when we know he ain't did nothing for them, these particular ones, to enter into their homes for a show? Because this is what this is, a show. And we are tired of the show because we watching. Now, everybody don't come down here, don't get it twisted because I know y'all want a slew of us to just swoop down here so that it could just look like it makes sense. But it only take one. That's what God said, it only take one. One. And trust me, they pay attention. My elders, they give me what they need. They tired of this. They tired of the repeatedly seeing the same people giving proclamations. And know what? The people that you giving it to, I'm not even knocking them. It's just how can corrupt give proclamation? How can corrupt give something good to something good? How? I don't see it. You don't see it either, Bone, do you? No, you don't. How can you sit up here and know that you have done something that was displeasurable to your community and ain't fixed it? Now, you might think you done fixed it because you brushed it up under the rug. But trust me, what's up under that rug is too much dirt. It's too much to keep covering up. Then, for the new ones that's coming in and for those that's going out, trust and believe you me. For the ones coming in, because a lot of time y'all come in on hidden agendas and lies and, "Well, we gonna do this and we gonna do that", and I'm gonna ask you to stay above the water. Please. Don't get in bed with the corrupt. Don't try to be befriended them and and I just won't say nothing because silence is violence, we all know that. And I just won't say nothing, and I just stay over here in my own lane so that it won't look like we cool or that we, you know, so that I don't get the heat on me. Because, trust me, y'all, I know what's going on, I get it every day. It's a lot of stuff I don't even discuss when I come up here. There's a lot of stuff I don't even discuss when I come up here. And some of y'all be feeling like, oh, there she go again. But trust me, there's some behind-the-scenes stuff going on. God said this was the year for removal. Don't be removed with handcuffs. Because he said it. And he ain't a man, he gonna lie. So I'm praying for some of y'all and some of y'all, I'm praying for y'all to get up out of office. And I'm gonna help do that.
Thank you. Next up will be Nikki Bugs. You'll have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. All right, so, listen, I, and I have nothing to do with what just happened, but I was gonna bring up the proclamations. So my, my thing is, at the Landmark condominiums, we deserve an award. We deserve a proclamation for what we have experienced at the Landmark due to the hands of the Airbnb investors and the HOA board. We deserve an award for that. For the bullying, the unwarranted retaliation, mental abuse, physical abuse, the degradation and defiling of the property, the ever-evolving hostile atmosphere that we live in. Ever-evolving, ever-evolving. What's interesting about that is just the mere fact that when we come home, we don't have a home. We actually live in a hotel. Imagine that. Imagine that, walking into a hotel and there are different people there every day to every two, three days. Airbnb is not an STR. It's a hospitality event. The building that they stole, they're trying to steal from the rest of us that live in that building, they could've purchased another building and built that, 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 um, that option out and then had their own building and they could've done whatever they wanted. But instead, they decided to steal our homes and make things difficult. That's what we're living with. Abuse, retaliation, bullying, terroristic tactics. We realize there are big events coming into Atlanta, descending into Atlanta. We realize that it's a money-making event for the city and maybe for some of you and, and whoever. That's fantastic. We deserve award for the three-plus years we've been fighting for our homes, and nothing has been done yet. Please step up. We need an emergency intervention. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll have up to two minutes today.
Thank you for your time. First, give an honor to God, who oftentimes called my conductor. I don't have a PhD, you all know that, but I got a G.O.D. We got a problem. We got a problem. I'm, I'm watching the news. I'm watching the news. Seventy-one-year-old man get attacked on a model train. Mr. Bond, did I tell you what's gonna happen? And it's not over. It's just getting started. It is just getting started, people. I've asked you all to emulate the program that Fulton County does for lift rides for seniors. You all have not booed, have mean thought about it? Not one time. Not once. Just as L.A. Pink says, it's just like going in one ear and coming out the other. When we sit up here and beg you all time and time again, how many of you can honestly say that you think about what we talk about? How many of you can actually tell me that you have actually considered providing lift rides like Fulton County does? They used to provide 16 rides per night, per month, and now it's like four rides per month. It's gonna get worse, y'all. And y'all do understand that it's going to get worse. People getting put out of their houses. People getting beat up in their own neighborhood. It's gonna get worse, y'all. One of the reasons it's gonna get worse is because you all don't give a damn. You support special interest groups.
Expired.
And leave alone the people who pay your salary. That's sad. You can, you can go knock on my door. And beg for my vote after Election Day.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
For yet.
Time is expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all the members of the public who came forward today to provide public comments. Councilmember Bond, would you like to respond?
Just to respond again, Mr. Davenport, as I've explained to you from this microphone and in person, Fulton County receives a federal grant to run that program. That grant is going away, and that is why Fulton County has cut back the rides on that program. We, we had talks with the, uh, people in the administration about the city potentially applying for a similar grant. Because of the change in administrations, that grant is no longer available. So we would have to find an alternative funding source to either match what Fulton County does or to supplement that. And so I've continued to, to work on that on your behalf.
How long have I been asking for this?
So I responded to you. This isn't the point of having a conversation. This is to give you a response to the issue that you raised. We have each other's cell phone numbers and we can continue to talk online. And I'm more than happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Thank you, Ms. Davenport. I want to, again, thank all the members of the public who came forward to provide remarks before the body today. We will now move to a report of the Journal. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Council President and Members of Council. I, Corinne Aglindo, municipal clerk of the City of Atlanta, do hereby certify that the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, May 5th, 2025, were true and correct.
Thank you. If there are no revisions to the minutes, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilmember Juan, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Any discussion on the motion to adopt Journal? We do this unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count of unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the Journal.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. Motion to adopt Journal carries. Next, we'll move to Communications. Madam Clerk.
Item number one is 25C-0067. This is a communication from Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, District 9, Andrea Alboon, District 10, Marcy Uccola Overstreet, District 11, Antonio Lewis, District 12, and Ishay Collins, Post 3 at Large, appointing Ms. Kimberly Wright to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee. Staff recommendation to refer to Transportation Committee and Committee on Counsel.
Let the item follow that course.
Mr. President, if I may take items two and three as a block.
Please proceed.
Item number two is 25C-0068. This is a communication from Tanya Greer, County Clerk, to the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, submitting their appointment to Mr. Jeff, Jeff Mullavy to serve as a member of the Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Item number three is 25C-0069. A communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. David Simpkins to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority. This appointment is for a term of four years. Staff recommendation for both those items is refer to Community Development Human Services Committee and Committee on Counsel.
Let the items follow that course.
If I may take item four and five as a block.
Please proceed.
Item number four is 25C-0070. This is a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, appointing Ms. Robin Craig to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Audit Committee. This appointment is for a term of four years. Item number five is 25C-0071. This is a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Jana Edmondson Cooper Squire to serve as a contract compliance hearing officer for the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of two years. Staff recommendation for both those items is to finance Executive Committee and Committee on Counsel.
Let both items follow that course.
If I may take item six and seven as a block.
Please proceed.
Item number twenty, item number six is 25C-0072. This is a communication from the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Commission, submitting a copy of the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Report. Item number seven is 25C-0073. This is a communication from Councilmembers Liliana Batieri, District 5, Alex Wan, District 6, Howard Shook, District 7, Mary Norwood, District 8, and Matt Westmoreland, Post 2 at Large, appointing Mr. Joe Sutherland to serve as a member of the Artificial Intelligence Commission. Staff recommendation for both those items is to, uh, accept and file.
Let both items follow that course.
That concludes the communications, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any vetoed legislation for consideration?
There are none.
Thank you. There is one piece of unfinished business that was held in the breast of counsel again last meeting, 25-0-1163. Councilmember Westmoreland had made the motion to, um, move it to the breast of counsel, so I'm going to ask him, uh, where we are with this.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to refer back to committee.
There's a motion by Councilmember Westmoreland, seconded by Councilmember, uh, Bond, to refer this back to committee. I'm assuming it's going back to the CDHS committee? I believe that's where it came from.
Sounds good.
Mr. Parliament, is that correct?
Yes, it was a CDHS item.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Winston. Yeah, let's go ahead and read the caption. I'll, I'll read the caption quickly. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to amend FY 2025 budget to transfer funds in the amount of $200,000 and zero cents to the Atlanta Student Movement Trust Fund pursuant to ordinance 1901156 and for other purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer this item? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer 25-0-1163 to the CDHS committee.
The vote is closed. That's thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to refer carries. We'll now move to the Consent Agenda Section 1. These are items found on, starting on page five of your materials. They are items for a second reading, therefore the appropriate motion will be to adopt. But first, let me ask, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda Section 1? Councilmember Shook.
Uh, yes, that would be 25O1078, uh, item three, page six.
Any other items to be removed from the Consent Agenda Section 1? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section 1. Moved by Councilmember Batieri, seconded by Councilmember Juan. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section 1 with one item removed? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section 1 with one item removed.
The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Item number 24 on page 12 of 25-0-1244, like to send forward to the mayor post haste.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos, uh, seconded by Councilmember Juan to move 25O1244 to the, to the mayor's office post haste. Any other items for post haste? Councilmember Lewis.
Item 25R3452. Can we send that to the mayor post haste?
25R2342.
25R3452.
3452. Councilmember Amos, would you accept an addition to your motion? Great. So there's a motion to move two items to the mayor's office post haste. Any others? Any discussion on the motion to move these items post haste? We do this with unanimous consent, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the unanimous consent on the motion to move these two items to the mayor's office post haste.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion, uh, carries. We'll now move to the Consent Agenda Section 2. These are items that begin on page 26 of your materials. They are items for first reading, therefore the appropriate motion will be to refer. First, let me ask, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda Section 2? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to refer. Moved by Councilmember Juan, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Any discussion on the motion to refer these items? Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer the Consent Agenda Section
The vote is open? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, fourteen? Fourteen, fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion to refer carries. We'll now move to the report of standing committees.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. We have nine items on the report for today. Um, I am going to take the first item, item number 25-C-00501. Uh, communication from Katie Kilpatrick, President and CEO of Metro Atlanta Chamber of Commerce, submitting the appointment of Mr. Christopher Burris to serve as a member of the governing board of the Office of the Inspector General. This appointment is for a term of three years and the recommendation is favorable from the committee.
There's a motion coming out of committee to, uh, adopt 25C-0050. Does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 25C-0050.
The vote is open?
I can't vote.
The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, zero nays?
Fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Thank you. We will now jump to item number 25-C-00583. A communication from Councilmembers Liliana Batieri, District 5, Alex Wan, District 6, and Matt Westmoreland, Post 2 at Large, reappointing Mrs. Roseanne Maltese to serve as a member of the Water and Sewer, Sewer Appeals Board. This appointment is for a term of two years, to begin retroactively on March 4th, 2025, and expire on March 3rd, 2027. The recommendation is favorable from the committee.
There's a motion coming out of committee to adopt 25-C-0058. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 25C-0058.
The vote is closed? It's fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Great. We will now jump to item number 25-C-0062. Item number five, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Byron Gibbs to serve as a member of the License Review Board. This appointment is for a term of two years and the recommendation from the committee is favorable.
There's a 25- There's a 25-C-0062 coming out of committee, favorable to adopt. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 25C-0062.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Great. For items 25-C-00582, excuse me, 00572, and item numbers 25-C-00594, I make a motion to enter into Committee of the Whole to not only recognize these recommendations, but possibly allow the appointees to speak.
There's a motion by Councilmember Collins to enter Committee of the Whole, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Batthiari. Any discussion on the motion to move Committee of the Whole? We do this via unanimous consent, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move into Committee of the Whole.
Fourteen yays, 0 nays.
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion carries. We are now in Committee of the Whole. Chair Collins.
Great, thank you all so much. For item number 25-C-00572, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Ricky Smith to serve as our new Aviation General Manager for the City of Atlanta. This recommendation becomes, is favorable from the committee. Mr. Smith is joining us today and would like to see if he would like to say a few, a few words.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Smith. You have the floor.
Good evening. I'm gonna need four and a half. Good evening. It is, it is truly an honor to be here. I want to thank, first of all, Mayor Andre Dickens for showing this level of confidence in me to come in and, and lead what is the busiest and most efficient and soon to be the most resilient airport in the world. We have an amazing team at the Department of Aviation, and the opportunity to, to work with that team is, is also an honor. I've spent, I've had the great pleasure of spending a great deal of time with Madam COO, who has provided me amazing guidance and has been a steady hand helping me with this transition, so I want to thank her as well. But I also want to thank the members of the council. I've met with, with many of you, haven't met with all of you yet. And the sage advice and counsel that you've provided me will go a long way in allowing me to work with the team to find what we call at Department of Aviation, next level. So again, thank you for considering this opportunity. Hopefully I get your approval, because we have a lot of work to do, and I want to get to it. So again, thank you for the consideration.
There's already a motion coming out of committee, it doesn't need to be moved, so any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 25C-0057.
One moment. The vote is open? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith, and welcome. We're really excited.
Godspeed and safe travel.
Next up is item number 25-C-0059, item four, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. James Gregg Iarly to serve as our new Commissioner of the Department of Watershed Management for the City of Atlanta. Mr. Iarly is joining us today as well, and would love to give him a few minutes, a few moments to speak.
Thank you for being here.
It is an honor and pleasure. Thank you, council members. Also, thank you, COO Burks. I would not be here. She's the first person I met from Atlanta, and a big reason why I'm here. I promise, in my tenure here as Commissioner, if I'm so voted in, that I will tell you 100% transparency, what I believe is the right course ahead, and give you my just honest opinion. And, and I won't hide anything at all. Our primary mission in watershed management is to protect public health, safety, and the environment, and do that in the most equitable manner as possible. I was just talking to General Manager Smith about the airport and the challenges we have ahead in watershed. You know, getting it right 99.9% of the time is, is not good enough when you bill 174,000 accounts. If you get it right 99.9% of the time, that means still 1,000 bills are potentially not right. And so, we're gonna have to get it better than 99.9%, and I promise to get us on the road towards that. So with that, it's an honor to be here in Atlanta, and honored to have my wife here with me, and we are enjoying Atlanta, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. There's a motion coming out of committee to adopt 25C-0059. It does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion to adopt? Councilmember Batthiari.
No, just as Alex Wong pointed out, we're gonna work with Mrs. Commissioner on how to properly say Atlanta. There's no second, there's no second T.
Atlanta.
Atlanta. It's spelled A-T-L-A-N-N-U-H. You got this.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt this item.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Thank you all so much. Congratulations, Mr. Iarly, and we look forward to your leadership. Thank you all again.
Mr. Iarly.
With that being said, Mr. President, would love to make a motion to exit out of the Committee of the Whole.
There's a motion by Councilmember Collins, seconded by Councilmember Dozier, to exit out of Committee of the Whole. Is there any discussion on the motion to exit Committee of the Whole? We do this via unanimous consent, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound, count on unanimous consent on the motion to exit Committee of the Whole.
Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Sorry, say that again?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays.
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion to exit Committee of the Whole carries. We are now back in regular session. Chair Collins.
Yes, I now make a motion to approve all of the items from communications, taking items 1 through 5 together.
Actually, just the items that we did in Committee of the Whole.
Oh, sorry, yes. I would like to make a motion to approve item numbers 25-C-00572 and 25-C-00594.
There's a motion to approve the items we took in Committee of the Whole by Councilmember Collins, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Any discussion on the motion to approve the actions taken in Committee of the Whole? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to approve the actions.
One moment. The vote is open? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion is carried.
Great, thank you. This brings us to our communications and resolutions. If there are no objections, we will take items 6 and 7 together.
Please proceed.
25-R-34936, a resolution by the Finance Executive Committee to reappoint Mr. Donald, Mr. Donald Penovi to the City of Atlanta Audit Committee as one of the three at-large members appointed by the entire city council for a said term to begin upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes. The recommendation from the committee is favorable on this one. 25-R-3494, item number seven, a resolution by the Finance Executive Committee to appoint Mr. Charles Bell to the City of Atlanta Audit Committee as one of the three at-large members appointed by the entire city council, said term to begin upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes. This, this item is also recommended favorable from the committee.
There's motions coming out of committee to adopt 25R-3493 and 3494. They do not need seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt these two items? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt these items.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed? Thirteen yays, 0 nays?
Thank you.
Oh, hold on just a second. Councilmember Wong, how would you like your vote reflected? Councilmember Wong's an aye.
Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt these two items carries.
Okay, thank you. This now brings us to our ordinance for first read. An ordinance, excuse me, item number 25-Z, excuse me, -O-1291, item number eight, an ordinance by Committee on Counsel to amend Part 2, Chapter 2, under Administration, Article 2, Legislative of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to add a new section, Section 2-106, to codify procedures for the City of, City Council when meetings as a Committee of Whole and for other purposes. This is to be accepted and referred back to Committee on Counsel for, for its second reading.
So are you making a motion to refer?
Yes, making a motion to refer back to committee.
There's a motion to refer to Committee on Counsel by Councilmember Collins, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer 25-0-1291.
The vote is open? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion to refer carries.
Great, thank you. And finally, our resolution, item number 25-R-3502, item number nine, a resolution by Committee on Counsel requesting that all legislation creating a board, authority, commission, committee, or other, other similar body, also known as base, includes specific court information to promote transparency, accountability, and engagement, and for other purposes. This item comes before the body with a favorable recommendation, recommendation from the Committee on Counsel, and our recommendation is to adopt.
There's a motion coming out of committee to adopt 25R-3502. It doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Council, Mr. Council President and Council. That is all we have for today's report.
Thank you, Chair Collins. Next up will be Zoning Committee, Chair Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no report.
Thank you. Next up will be Public Safety and Legal Administration, Chair Boone.
Mr. President, we do not have a report today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is City Utilities Committee, Chair Lewis.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Thank you. May I have a motion to bring forth the substitute to read the substituted caption?
There's a motion to bring forth a substitute. Just, just for clarification, this is the item that was pulled from Consent Agenda 24-0-1078. There's a motion to bring forth substitute by Councilmember Lewis, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Overstreet, you want to go ahead and read the, does the caption change?
It, it, it does change a little.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead and read it before we take up consideration?
A substitute ordinance by City Utilities Committee authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the fiscal year 2025 Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extension Fund 5052, budget in the amount of $6,493,699.41, to transfer funds from the watershed reserves to their appropriations to add funds to the water supply tunnel project and for other purposes. Motion to adopt on substitute.
You've got to adopt the substitute first. So we've got a motion to substitute. Just for clarification, it's just changing the amount, is that correct, Chair Lewis?
Yes, the substitute increases the funding amount to 6.4 million.
Thank you. So, any discussion on the motion to bring forth the substitute? Good. Hearing none, we'll move to vote on the motion to bring forth the substitute. Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion to bring forth the substitute carries.
Council President, that concludes my report. Motion to adopt the substitute.
We've got a motion to adopt on substitute by Councilmember Lewis, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Westmoreland. Any discussion on the motion to adopt a substitute, Councilmember Wong?
Thank you, Mr. President. This may be question for finance, but I'm curious as to why the amount changed from when we met last week to this week, and wasn't there a companion paper in committee that was the actual contract? Just want to make sure everything is ticking and tying.
Ask Finance Department if they want to respond.
Councilmember Wong, I don't have any immediate information on the change to the, the amount, but I can get back to you before the end of the meeting.
I mean, if the, the rest of the body wants to move forward, I, there's unreadiness on my part, but if y'all are ready to go, it's fine.
Any other discussion on the motion to adopt on substitute 24-0-1078? Councilmember Shook.
Well, he's asking a valid question. I'm wondering if there's appetite to set this aside until later on in today's agenda, and hopefully we'll have an answer to the question.
Have we entertained a motion to postpone, I believe is the, what you're trying to do, Councilmember Shook? If you'd like to do that?
No, I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to postpone by Councilmember Shook, seconded by, who is that? Seconded, Councilmember Batthiari? Well, we'll just postpone until the last part of the meeting, Councilmember Shook, if that's acceptable, his motion.
Right.
Any discussion on the motion to postpone? We do this via unanimous consent, any objection to the motion to postpone until the last part of the meeting? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to postpone.
Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays. We will now postpone this item until the end of the meeting.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. We'll see you in a little while. Next up is CDHS Chair Winston.
Thank you, Council President. We have no report.
Thank you. Next up is Transportation Committee, Chair Amos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Finally today, Finance Exec Committee, Chair Shook, who looks as if he's reporting.
Mr. President, we have first, three communications. I would like to take them as a block.
No objection, please proceed.
25C-0063 is a communication from Ms. Hampton, who's Chair of the Audit Committee, submitting the performance audit on paid administrative leave. 25C-0064 is a communication from Ms. Hampton, Chair of the Audit Committee, submitting the performance audit on service delivery and remote work. And 25C-0065 is a communication from Ms. Hampton, Chair of the Audit Committee, submitting performance audit timeliness of payments. The motion is accept and file.
There's a motion coming out of committee to accept and file these three items, and it does not need a second or any discussion on the motion to accept and file these items. Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to accept and file these three items.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed? Fourteen yays, 0 nays?
Fourteen yays, 0 nays, the motion to accept and file these items carries.
Thank you. And we have 25-0-1256, ordinance by Boone, Amos, Hillis, Collins, Winston, Dozier, Wong, and Westmoreland authorizing a payment in amount not to exceed $24,000 from various accounts to the City of Atlanta Office of Cultural Affairs to pay for expenses relating to the 2025 Jazz Festival events and for other purposes. The motion is to adopt. Uh, the motion is to adopt.
There's motion to adopt, 25 O 1256, coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing no move to vote, Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed. Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
That is all.
Thank you, Chair Shook. We will now move to personal papers. I don't see any for immediate consideration. So once again, I will go by the list, and the list today begins with Councilmember Winston. You've been kind to the clerk and you've been rewarded.
Thank you, thank you. First item is Elms ID 37978. An ordinance by Councilmember Jason H. Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services to waive the competitive source selections provisions contained in this section number listed of the Article of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to execute the First Amendment to the Cooperative Purchase Agreement listed ADP Implementation and Integration with ADP Inc. to add the Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services and Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services as Worksource Atlanta as an additional authorized users and to add additional funding on behalf of the ADL ES in an amount not to exceed $800,000.00, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Officer ID 37978 will be referred to the FEC.
Thank you. Elms ID 38038. An ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston and Matt Westmoreland re-adopting the two, the 2013 Lakewood Livable Centers Initiative, LCI, study without modification for the purpose of reactivating the plan. Thank you. And then last, Elms 38.
Was that all of 38038?
Yes.
Sorry. Elms 388308 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you. And then Elms 38045, a resolution by Councilmembers Winston, Bakhtiari, Dozier, Faroki, and Westmoreland requesting that the mayor or his designate conduct a feasibility study to address the challenges small businesses face in accessing affordable retail space in Atlanta to consider tax incentives, lease subsidies, pilot programs, and other support strategies and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38045 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Westmoreland.
Elms ID 38037, resolution by Westmoreland authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed $10,000.00 from the District Eight discretionary account to the Ardmore Park Neighborhood Association pursuant to 6306 of the city's charter to authorize a CFO or a designated donation response to make the donation authorized hereby from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38037 will be referred to the CDHS Committee. Councilwoman Wan.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's Elms ID 38049. An ordinance by Councilmember Alex Wan to amend Chapter 10, Alcohol Beverages of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, a section blank, to create an alcohol licensee auto plea program and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38049 will refer to the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. Councilor Shook.
Thank you. Elms 38035. Resolution by Shook authorizing the CFO to refund customers for overpayments to water and sewer accounts in the amount of blank, all funds to be charged to and paid from the sources indicated.
Elms ID 38035 will be referred to the, uh, excuse me, the FEC.
Elms 38034, resolution by Shook authorizing the Commissioner of the Department of Watershed Management to adjust water and sewer service charges on certain customer accounts in accordance with the Atlanta City Code section indicated in the amount of blank.
Elms ID 38034 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms 38018 is an ordinance by Shook to amend the fiscal FY25 budget by undertaking an operating transfer to the General Fund from the Capital Finance Fund and other transfers related to the indirect cost allocations by adding to anticipations and appropriations in the amounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38018 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
And then lastly, I have an ordinance that appears not to, um, have an Elms number. This is an ordinance by Shook authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $10,000 to the Peach Street Park Civic Association from the District Seven carryforward account for the Peach Tree Park Neighborhood Master Plan and for other purposes.
That item will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Overstreet.
Now we have one. It's Elms ID number 38019. An ordinance by Councilmember Mercy Collier Overstreet to, one, ratify the imposition of certain non-ad valorem property assessments levied upon properties participating in the city's Property Assess Clean Energy Program. And two, authorize the transmittal of information to the applicable tax commissioner for the billing and collection of PACE assessment. Three, direct the applicable tax commissioner to bill and collect the PACE assessment in the same manner on the same day as the assessment for solid waste charges and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38019 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. And thank you, President. Elms ID 38005. An ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis waiving Part Two Code of Ordinances, general ordinances, uh, Chapter Two Administration, Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division Four of the Atlanta City Code to authorize the mayor or his designate to exercise the Fourth Renewal Option for the Intergovernmental Joint Funding Agreement, IGAS 1210119, Long Term Water Quant, Quantity and Water Quality Monitoring Program Services with the United States Geol, United States Survey on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year, retroactively effective from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $506,310.00 to authorize the mayor or his designate to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement, retroactively effective beginning January 1st, 2025 through the exercise of the Fourth Renewal Option under, under the agreement. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account nor number listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38005 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Good. And huge deal for the South Side of Atlanta, Pittman Park Community. Elms ID 38050. A resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to accept a donation of enhancements and site improvements as outlined in Exhibit A, valued at approximately $80,000.00 from the Atlanta Hawks Foundation Incorporated for Pittman Park Recreation Center, located at 950 Jarabaldi Street, Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30310, for the purposes of improving the facility and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38050 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Hillis.
First item is Elms ID 38008. An ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into a temporary access and construction easement agreement and a permanent access and utilities easement agreement with 3B South LLC to relocate certain city-installed infrastructure from adjacent property to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute and, execute the easement agreements and any other agreements necessary to effectuate the purpose of this ordinance and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38008 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Next item is Elms ID 37996. A resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the city, for, on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to execute Amendment Number One to the Project Management Agreement with the PATH Foundation, a Georgia nonprofit corporation for the Silver Comet Connector, MacArthur Boulevard Northwest Project, to add funds in the amount not to exceed $250,000.00, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 37996 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Completes my items. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Faroki.
Thank you. Elms ID 38043, an ordinance by Councilmember Mayor Faroki to amend the 1982 Atlanta zoning ordinance as amended by amending Chapter 20 V Patsia Highland Historic District to add convention centers as a prohibited use in the use table and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38043 will be referred to the zoning committee. Councilwoman Collins.
Yes, um, Elms, uh, Elms item number 38039, Worksource Innovation and Opportunity Act, um, a resolution by Councilmember Esha Collins pursuant to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services, also known as Worksource Atlanta, to execute a One Stop Partners Memorandum of Understanding with One Stop Partners in Local Workforce Development, Area Number Three, concerning the operation of the One Stop Part, the One Stop Delivery System in the local area and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38039 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Yes. I'm sorry. Yep, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elms ID number 38033. An ordinance by Councilmembers Andrea L. Boone and Michael Julian Bond to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances at Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 3, Section 10 dash 109, penalties for due cause findings by the License Review Board and penalties imposed by the mayor such that the mandatory minimum of five days suspension shall only be imposed upon the second offense of failure to renew a license on or prior to January 1st within two years and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38033 will be referred to the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee.
Elms ID number 38040. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone to amend the land use element of the 2021 Comprehensive Development Plan, CDP, so as to redesignate property located at 745 Fulton Road, parcel ID number 14024100030049, from single-family residential SFR land use designation to medium-density residential MDR land use designation and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38040 will be referred to the zoning committee.
Elms ID number 38041. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone to rezone from R4, Single Family Residential, to MR3, Multi-Family Residential for property located at 745 Fulton Road, parcel ID number 14024100030049, to modify the official zoning map and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38041 will be referred to the CDHS.
Elms ID number 38047. A resolution by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone to amend the proposed FY 2026 budget to transfer funds in the amount of $50,000.00 to the Atlanta Commission on Women to support its operations, programming, and initiatives and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38047 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms ID number 38046. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone authorizing the conveyance of city-owned real property located at Jamestown Court, parcel ID number 0299031047 to the City of College Park for the purpose of supporting the development of the Fulton County Botanical Gardens to authorize the mayor, the chief procurement officer, and city attorney to execute all necessary documents to effectuate said conveyance to waive conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38046 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Elms ID number 38030. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone authorizing the Office of the Public Defender on behalf of the City of Atlanta to accept a grant in the amount of $156,050.00 over the period of two years from Immigrant Justice Corps for the placement of a fellow to assist the Office of the Public Defender in providing immigration, deportation, defense, and advisory or counsel waiving the provisions of Section 2910 of the Atlanta Code of Ordinances requiring prior authorization of grant applications, amending the FY 2026 budget to reflect grant funds anticipated and appropriated and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38030 will be referred to the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee.
Elms ID number 38042. A resolution by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone authorizing the City of Atlanta authorize donations pursuant to Section 6 dash 306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter to the following nonprofit charitable organizations, the Winning Edge Leadership Academy, Camp Kizzy, Inc., Dream Above the Influence, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $500.00 to each organization and to, in an amount not to exceed $1,500.00, $1,500 to support each organization's strong commitment to improving the lives, experiences, and opportunities of women and girls in Atlanta to authorize the chief financial officer or his designate to make the donations authorized hereby from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38042 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the FY 25 General Fund Budget to create a mayor's Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, MOE.DI, Support Trust Fund for the purpose of funding MOE.DI initiatives and events as may be authorized, waiving Article Division Four of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute contracts with sponsors to support MOE.DI events, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of MOE.DI to accept a donation from the Community Foundation for Greater Atlanta in an amount not to exceed $9,670.00 for the purpose of supporting MOE.DI initiatives and events to amend the FY 25 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations donated funds in an amount not to exceed $9,670.00, all funds to be charged to and paid from the fund accounts listed herein, authorizing donations and sponsorships funds as may be subsequently approved by council to support future MOE.DI initiatives to be deposited into the trust fund account created hereby and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38044 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Elms ID number 37966. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to waive provisions of Part Three, Code of Ordinances, Land Development Code, Part 16, Zoning, Chapter 11, C1 Community District, Business District Regulations, Section 16 dash 11 dot 003, permitted principal use and structures of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for the purpose of waiving a distance requirement for a service station located at 2836 Lakewood Avenue Southwest and for other purposes.
Elms ID 37966 will be referred to the zoning committee.
Elms ID number 38036. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to provide the Second Amendment to Ordinance 25 dash O dash 1138, which originally authorized three eight, which originally authorized the City of Atlanta to donate funds in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars and zero cents each to East Atlanta Business Association, Little Five Points Business Association, West End Merchants Coalition, Virginia Highlands District Association, and Sweet Auburn Works, and which has authorized the mayor and his designated to execute corresponding agreements therewith for terms of twelve months to support and encourage participation in the Atlanta Main Streets Program, and which was intended pursuant to the Ordinance twenty-five zero twelve forty-six to remote, remove certain organizations unauthorized to receive donations under Chapter Section six dash three oh six, and to redirect the donation intended for the Little Five Points Business Association, the Little Five Points Cultural District, to redirect the donations intended for East Atlanta Business Association and West End Merchants Coalition, to Sweet Auburn Works, and for other purposes.
Elms ID thirty eight oh three six will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Elms ID number three eight zero zero six, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, waiving Part Two Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter Two Administration, Article Ten, Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division Four of the Atlanta, I'm sorry, the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances, to ratify services rendered in connection with an agreement, FC eight nine one nine, annual contract for security guard services with Thorpe Building Services Incorporated, All-in-One Security Services Incorporated, AJV, beginning February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, to June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, through execution of the new contract, to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute the Seventh Amendment to the agreement on behalf of the Department of Watership Management, Public Works, and Transportation, to extend the term of the agreement for the period of four months, retroactively effective from February fourteenth to June fourteen, twenty twenty-five, to add funds to the agreement in the amount not to exceed two million three hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and zero cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department and organizational account listed therein and for other purposes.
Elms ID thirty eight oh oh six will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. Elms ID three eight zero four eight, an ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, Councilmembers Winston, Faroki, Amos, Dozier, Westmoreland, Collins, Bond, Overstreet, Boone, Hillis, Juan, and Shook, to amend the City of Atlanta Building Code to add a new section for roofing reflecton standards to reduce heat produced by darker roofing materials and for other purposes.
Elms ID thirty eight oh four eight will be referred to the City Utilities Committee. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Elms ID three eight zero one zero, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, supplementing the and reinstating and amended Master Bond Ordinance of the City of Atlanta adopted on March twentieth, two thousand ninety-nine dash O dash eighteen ninety-six, as previously amended and supplemented, providing for the issuance by the City of Atlanta and its, of its airport general revenue bonds in the combined aggregate principal amount not to exceed one billion, three hundred million dollars in multiple series designated herein as Series twenty twenty-five A B bonds, and any additional sub-series designated as herein permitted, providing funds for the purpose of, among other things, financing and refinancing in whole or in part the cost of planning, engineering, design, acquisition, equipping, and constructing of certain improvements to Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, providing for a reasonable required debt service reserve, providing for the payment of costs of issuance, including bond insurance, if any, providing for the forms of and, of and authorizing execution of said Series twenty twenty-five A B bonds, providing for the rights of the holders and said Series twenty twenty-five A B bonds, providing for the rights of the holders of said Series twenty twenty-five A B bonds, authorizing and approving three recorporation, use, and distribution of primarily official statement and final official statements in connection with the offer and sales of said Series twenty twenty-five A B bonds, granting the chief officer, the finance, the city finance officer or airport manager authority to deem final the preliminary official statement for purposes of Securities and Exchange Commission Rule fifteen C two dash one two, and the authority to approve and execute a final official statement, authorizing execution of a continuing disclosure agreement, a bond purchase agreement, certain other agreements in connection with said Series twenty twenty-five A B bonds, and providing for incidental related actions, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Elms ID thirty eight oh ten will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms ID three eight zero zero nine, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, an ordinance supplementing and restating the amended Master Bonds Ordinance of the City of Atlanta adopted on March twentieth, two thousand ninety-nine dash O dash one eight nine, one eight nine six, as previously amended and supplemented to provide for the reestablishment of the twenty twenty-five Airport Short Term Note Program in connection with the issuance time to time by the City of Atlanta and its A third lien Airport General Revenue Short Term Note Series twenty twenty-five STNA, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed three hundred million dollars outstanding any debt, third lien Airport General Revenue Short Term Note Series twenty twenty-five STNB, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed three hundred million dollars and zero cents outstanding at any time, and C, third lien Airport General Revenue Short Term Note Series twenty twenty-five STNC, the dollar amount to exceed three hundred million outstanding at any time, and in the combined aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred fifty million dollars and zero cents outstanding at any time in support of the Airport ATL Nets Plan and incumbents authority and for the purpose of financing in an interim basis in whole or in part in the cost of planning, engineering, designing, acquiring, contracting, equipping certain improvements to Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta, Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, to authorize and improve the form of revolving credit agreement to be entered into and certain other agreements in connection with the twenty twenty-five Airport Short Term Note Program, to authorize City of Atlanta General Revenue Bonds to be issued as takeout bonds if and to the extent required to pay the principal of and to acquire interest on the Series twenty twenty-five Short Term Note at maturity, all to the extent deemed to be in the best interest of the city by the finance officer and for other purposes.
Elms ID thirty eight oh oh nine will be for the Finance Exec Committee. Thank you, Councilmember Amos, for your service on both of those long bills. Councilmember Overstreet, I believe you have one more paper for us today.
Elms ID. Elms ID three eight zero five one, an ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances at Chapter Fifty-four, Article One, Section fifty-four dash one, Affordable Housing, to provide an exemption from the mandatory affordable housing requirements for publicly subsidized multifamily residential properties for student housing and for other purposes.
Elms ID thirty eight oh five one will be referred to the Zoning Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other papers for referral today? Hearing none, we are now at the point where we can consider again our postponed legislation. Let me just pause for a minute on Councilmember Lewis. Well, first, let me just ask, Councilmember Juan, you had raised a concern.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, thank you for the pausing on this one. I did confirm with finance as well as legislative staff who talked to Watershed, this paper does have a companion paper that needed the extra funds. We were supposed to have substituted this in committee, but for some reason it did not happen there. So we're caught up here and they caught the gap, and that's why we're bringing the substitute forward now. So we're, in my opinion, is ready to go.
Got it.
Move approval.
There's actually, it's actually still moved, it's still under consideration for adoption. So any other discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clark, please open the vote on the motion to adopt twenty-five dash O dash ten seventy-eight as substituted.
The vote is open? Okay. Thirteen yays, zero nays?
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt as substituted carries. We will now move to general remarks of the body. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. Well, first, I just wanted to reemphasize again the issues of Ariana Smith, because I don't, of Adriana Smith, I don't think a lot of people know that she's being held in Georgia and was previously held at Emory. And just so y'all know, this is a woman that is brain dead, that is being forced to, that they are attempting to force to carry a child to treat as an incubator. Why this is so scary, it means that corpses have more rights than we do as women. So I want to note that because it is something that is affecting our state and our country, and it's terrifying. The second thing, on a much happier note, is I really want to congratulate Alex Fennell from my team for graduating from GSU Law School. So really proud of her. Just wanted to give her an applause. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Boone.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite everyone over to celebrate the birthday of President Shipman and Dustin Hillis. We have wonderful cupcakes. Thank you all, and happy birthday.
Thank you. Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is graduation week for Atlanta Public Schools. Wanted to give a special shout out to the three thousand one hundred and seventy-four seniors who will walk across the stage at a string of thirteen commencement exercises this week, and will join seven of us on this dais as proud alum to APS.
Thank you. Councilmember Shook.
Thank you. A reminder that budget hearings will resume at nine thirty right here in these chambers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Winston.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to send a very special happy birthday to my daughter Decker, who will be turning three this Saturday. So happy birthday, Decker. Daddy loves you. See you soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins.
Yeah, so Matt, Councilmember Westmoreland took part of my celebrations, but also wanted to celebrate that Tequila Rouse that is in my office as my operations director graduated with her masters from Georgia State in Criminal Justice, and my intern, Darian Johnson, graduated yesterday from Morehouse College and will be going to Harvard in August. In addition to getting ready to celebrate the three thousand-plus students for APS, this will be my first graduation in eleven years where I am in the audience versus on the stage. So really excited.
Councilmember Overstreet.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Bakhtiari for inviting me to Kirkwood this weekend. Saturday was so much fun at the Kirkwood Festival. That was a ball, and we had lots of wings. I didn't get the update on who won, but we also did a grand opening for the new entrance there at the Bessie Park, and had a ball. So thank you to Kirkwood for being so hospitable. And I want Michael Bond to talk about James Bond. Yep, we got a new Morehouse man in the house.
Councilmember Bond.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Overstreet. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I want to congratulate my nephew, James Bond, for graduating from Morehouse yesterday. And of course, that name was a name passed down from in my family prior to the creation of the famous character. But he is on his way to, he's going to be a teacher's assistant during the summer, and he'll be moving to Minneapolis to take on a very heady corporate job. So he'll be able to take his uncle to lunch. So we're very, very, very happy about that. And congratulations to he and all the graduates that happened this weekend and those in the future this week on the APS level.
Thank you. Just before I get to you, Councilmember Amos, I want to update two referrals. Elms thirty eight oh four eight should be both CUC and CDHS. Councilmember Bakhtiari's paper. That should be a dual referral. Apologize for that. And Councilmember Overstreet's last one that she brought in, thirty eight oh five one, actually should be, I didn't have it in front of me, but it actually should be CDHS, not zoning. Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir. Just want to give a shout out to Lorenzo Fanning, Fanning, born and raised here in the City of Atlanta, actually graduated tonight from the Atlanta Fire Rescue Academy. He will be an official City of Atlanta fireman a couple of hours from now, and then also, I believe, tomorrow is, we're doing an APD class from the Training Institute as well. So we're delivering fresh faces to public service through the City of Atlanta.
Thank Councilmember Amos. I just want to remind everybody, not this week, next week, Memorial Day will be celebrated on Monday, May twenty-sixth. Therefore, we will not have committee meetings. The revised committee schedule will be City Utilities on the twenty-seventh at ten, CDHS on the twenty-seventh at one, Public Safety on the twenty-seventh at three, and then on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, we'll have zoning at ten, transportation at eleven, and finance exec at one thirty. So we'll have two days of committee meetings week after next. Any other remarks for the body? Hearing none, I would invite the clerk to call the closing roll.
Thank you. We have Council President Doug Shipman.
Here.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, post one at large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, post two at large. Councilmember Ishay Collins, post three at large.
Here.
Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District one.
Here.
Councilmember Maria Faroki, District two. Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District three. Councilmember Jason Dosa, District four. Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District five.
Here.
Councilmember Alex Wan, District six. Councilmember Howard Shook, District seven. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District eight. Councilmember Dustin Hillis, District nine. Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, District ten. Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, District eleven. Councilmember Antonia Lewis, District twelve.
Without objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.